Good morning. The City of Boston zoning Board of Appeal hearing for July 8, 2025 is now in session. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of the Open Meeting Hall, including the updated provisions enacted by the legislature this year. The new law allows the Board to continue its practice of holding virtual hearings through June 2027. This hearing of the Board is being held remotely via the Zoom webinar event platform and is also being live streamed. In order to ensure this hearing of the Board is open to the public, members of the public may access this hearing through telephone and video conferencing. The information for connecting to this hearing is listed on today's hearing agenda, which is posted on the public notices page of the city's website, boston.gov. Members of the public will enter the virtual hearing as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on the screen and you will be muted throughout unless administratively unmuted when asked to comment. Board members, applicants, and their attorneys or representatives will participate in the hearing as panelists and they will appear alongside the presentation materials when speaking. Panelists are strongly encouraged to keep video on while presenting to the Board. As with our in-person meetings, comments and support will be followed by comments in opposition. The order of comments is as follows: elected officials, representatives of elected officials, and members of the public. The chair may limit the number of people called upon to offer a comment and the time for commenting as time constraints require. For that reason, the Board prefers to hear from members from members of the public who are most impacted by a project, that is, those individuals who live closest to the project. If you wish to comment on an appeal, please click the Raise Hand button along the bottom of your screen in the Zoom webinar platform. Click it again and your hand should go down. When the host sees your hand, you will receive a request to unmute yourself. So like yes, then you should be able to talk. If you are connected to the hearing by telephone, please press star nine to raise and lower your hand. You must press star six to unmute yourself after you receive your request from the host. Those called upon to comment will be asked to state their name and address first and then can provide their comment. In the interest of time and to ensure that you have enough time to do so, please raise your hand as soon as Mr. Stenbridge reads the address into the record. Do not raise your hand before the relevant address is called or the meeting host will not know to call on you at the appropriate time. Mr. Stenbridge.
Good morning, Madam Chair, present.
Good morning. Ms. Weewell.
Good morning, Madam Chair, present.
Good morning. Mr. Langham.
Good morning, Madam Chair, present.
Good morning. Ms. Turner.
Good morning, Madam Chair, present.
Good morning. Mr. Ekin.
Good morning, Madam Chair, present.
Good morning. So a note that we are a six-member board today. So if anyone needs an administrative deferral, please, please request it at the appropriate time. I also want to note today that we have six Article 80 projects on the docket. So a reminder to be pithy. We do not need to know every detail, every floor plan. So keep to a high level and make note of the variances you are seeking and how much they deviate from code. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Stenbridge.
Well, good, Madam Chair. We will begin with the hearing scheduled for 9:30 a.m. We'll begin with case BOA 1697206 with the address of 63 Buthford Avenue. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain to the Board?
Yes, I'm here. Thank you. Linda Nishenkin, architect for the project. Please proceed. Thank you so much. This is an application for a roof deck. It's a two-family building existing, which previously had a roof deck on it and has a existing stair to that roof. The deck was removed by a contractor probably in the last four or five years ago because it was found to be structurally not in good shape in terms of how the railing had been not attached to the roof structure itself. And if I may ask you to be kind enough to scroll down a few. Here, first of all, is the site plan of the land. It is this large plot at the front that you're seeing at the corners of Rutherford Avenue and Washington Street in Charlestown. May I ask you to proceed existing? First floor is not relevant at this point. You can go to the second, which is also not relevant. We'll go to the third. Continuation of this stair takes us to the top floor of the building, which has on top of it a roof stair. If we scroll to the next, you will see the existing roof plan. The outer limits are the street facades. The upper dark line is the existing roof of the top floor, which is set back. If we go to the next slide, you will see the proposed roof deck, in which I've called out the distance, the profile lines of the building facades, the top floor facade, and the edge of the roof decks. If you could keep going, that would be great. This is just an illustration of the railings around this. And I think we could scroll through these very quickly.
Ma'am, quick question. Just how set in is roof deck from the property line?
It varies from side to side and I would need to actually blow up those images in order to tell you. I think if you go to the next, yeah, okay, hold on. No, let's go in the other direction. No, keep going. I believe they are called out on the next one, for example. This is a street face. Let me see if I can see that. Yeah, okay. Sorry, next one.
You can keep going. I just.
Yeah, this is great. Okay, this one, if you could blow up, this is six, six foot eight inches from the face of the building on Rutherford Avenue. Okay, all right, if you keep going. There's a view of the front facade. The building, of course, is on an angled corner, so this is a straight-on view. If we go to the next, this is a side view on Washington Street. And a section through. Another side facing the water butter. And just the next is a detail sheets, which I think are not particularly relevant to you at this point. If you continue on, the next thing that you will see is the proposed railing type, which is a stainless steel rod, the most transparent that we could, that we found and that we thought would be appropriate for this site. And this is an old industrial building which has been converted to housing. It's an old canvas factory, as a matter of fact. In the next four slides, very quickly, you will just see renderings. If you just, okay, stop right there. That's great. Whoops, just go back a little bit. Just pull it down and stop. That's great. So they are proposed in a pale stainless steel and gray. There is a roof deck, as you can see, in a butter right next, right next to us on the left in this view. This is a view from the corner. If you go to the next slide, that's a more comprehensive view of the railing. And finally, this is from Washington Street. And that's basically it.
Questions from the Board?
Yeah.
Director, can you just confirm that its access is still via a hatch?
Access is via a hatch. It's absolutely, the hatch has not changed at all. It's a very low-profile hatch.
Thank you. Any other questions from the Board? Hearing none. May I have public testimony?
Madam Chair and Board members, good morning. Ciggy Johnson with the Office of Neighborhood Services. This petitioner completed the OMS community process. Our office hosted in a butter's meeting on May 8th, at which no concerns were raised. With that background, we defer judgment to the Board. Thank you.
Thank you. Something to say. It looks like we have no raised hands at the moment. Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? Yes.
Along with that, a couple of provisos for the motion, if that's possible. One with planning, planning department design review and attention to the planned Charlestown guidelines.
Is that acceptable?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Turner.
Yes.
Mr. Ekin.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries. Come on, ma'am. Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1696180 with the address of 37 Merrimack Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain to the Board?
Good morning. My name is David Sokol. I'm the attorney representing Rosalyn Goran, who owns the property, and Laz Parking, who operates the parking lot. This is, this is the parking lot, the large parking lot across the street from the Brook Courthouse. It's been in continuous operation, as is since 1956 that I know of. I've been myself parking there for some forty-some-odd, some odd years. There are no changes proposed. Some years ago, the BRA determined that it would be best if we put some trees in, curbing, screening, fencing, and that was all done. Frank and Leo Pagano operated the parking lot up until about the pandemic. And Laz Parking has been operating the parking lot since 2020, 21. This is a loud use and is discretionary with the Board. And by the way, excuse me, good morning, Madam Chairman and members of the Board, forgive me. It would seem that it's subject to a sunset clause, however, and it abuts the so-called Bullfinch Triangle, which puts part of the parking lot into the triangle, which makes it, the parking a discretionary use. It causes Laz Parking and Rosalyn to go through this process every two years. This is probably the seventh or eighth time that I've been asked to present the issue. There are no changes involved, no project, no building. It's run cleanly. We held the neighborhood meetings. There doesn't seem to be any objection. Everybody seems to be in support of having a parking lot across from the Brook Courthouse. And our biggest concern, my client's biggest concern, is the fact that every seventeen months, they have to start this project all over again and engage me or the next person to pretty much come before this Board and say the same thing that I've been saying six or eight times now every two years. And so we've asked to have the sunset clause removed. There's, there's no, no doubt that the parking lot's necessity, that it's there for good reason, good cause. It's a convenience to the courthouse, to the people who live in and around it, to the construction people, and anybody else who might want to come into or out of Boston. But it turns into a six-month process to come in and get the approval for what hasn't changed since 1956. So what I'm begging that this Board does is extend the permit and remove the sunset clause. And if there's any reason not to remove the sunset clause, to extend it at least for, let's say, the next ten years so that, that every two years or every seventeen months, somebody like me doesn't have to come in and repeat themselves and ask for the same relief that I've been asking for each and every time, every two years.
Can you speak to the curb cuts? One of the recommendations from Planning Department is to close the curb cut at Merrimack Street. Can you describe, can you walk us through your curb cuts?
No, I'm unaware of any request to change anything. This is.
Okay, someone from Planning Department, can you speak to your recommendations?
Here, there, yes. Jack Hoverson, planner on the zoning reform team, filling in for a bit while Jeff Hampton is out. So the planner who wrote the recommendation suggested closing one of the Merrimack curb cuts. There are three. It would be the far most right one on the screen here because it's immediately next to a crosswalk that goes across the street there. The concern from the planner, I think, was due to, you know, traffic coming out of that curb cut and interfering with the crosswalk. I'm not sure if anyone from BTD is on the call and wants to weigh in on that as well.
So may I, pardon me, I don't think that curb cut is on, on the property of the 37 Merrimack Street people. There's no crosswalk there. The crosswalk is down closer to, to the, the electric parking lot, the electric parking lot, which is, which abuts the 37 Merrimack Street parking lot, but, but it's not the 37 Merrimack Street parking lot. So the, and the traffic light and the curb light are way down by the cup of coffee towards, towards the end of the, towards the end, all the way on the right of what you're talking about. But the curb cut on Merrimack Street property doesn't, there's no crosswalk involved there and nobody would dare cross at that point in any case. So.
Yeah, understood. Thank you. I think that may have been a miscommunication from the planner who wrote the recommendation. So appreciate that, Claire.
Thank you. I'm sorry to inform you such. Yes.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, may I ask a question?
Of course. Any questions from the Board? Yeah.
Yeah, this is to planning. Is there any opinion on the sunset clause and whether it should be removed or perhaps maybe given increased time, more than two years, so they don't have to keep coming back?
Yeah, we had suggested making the sunset clause three years, you know, extending it slightly. But again, you know, parking lots are not necessarily the highest and best use in a place such as this, right, in downtown. So we want there to be an opportunity for, you know, potentially, you know, changing what the site could be in the future and allowing that possibility with a sunset clause here. Again, though, as the, you know, proponent noted, it has been extended in, in the past several times.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if we do keep any type of sunset clause, maybe five years would be more appropriate, but it just does seem like the Board keeps approving it, so.
Any other questions from the Board? Hearing none. Go ahead, Mr. Stenbridge.
How long has the parking lot been in existence?
Could you say that again, please, sir?
How long has the parking lot been in existence?
Oh, well, I know that it's been operated as the parking lot since 1956. I think, I think before that, it was the parking lot for paying furniture where, and it's been a parking lot pretty much forever as far as I know. But I know that it's been there since 1956. That would be sixty-eight years or something to that effect.
And you don't, and you don't know of any plans to change it anytime in the future?
I do know that there are no plans to change it whatsoever. It, it, it's, no, there are no plans to change it. And I want to point out that if anything were to be changed, we'd have to come before our Board and ask to have the plans or the changes approved. It is what it is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the Board? Hearing none. May I have public testimony?
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the Board. My name is Ava Jones, representing the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services regarding 37 Merrimack Street. Our office defers to the Board's judgment on this matter. A community process was conducted, including a distribution of a subcommittee flyer on Thursday, April 22nd, 2025. During the community comment period, I received no emails from constituents regarding the proposal. The Downtown North Association reviewed the proposal on May 14th, 2025, expressing non-opposition to the proposal. And additionally, the applicant has been in contact with Susan Binwa of the West End Civic Association, who has determined that WECO will not, also not oppose the proposal. At this time, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services defers to the Board's judgment on this matter. Thank you, everybody, for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Does he have an additional raise hand at the moment? Would that may I have a motion? I'm sorry, is Jay Walsh, are you giving testimony?
My apologies, Madam Chair. I thought I had raised my hand. Jay Walsh, on behalf of the Downtown North Association, I just want to echo what Ms. Jones said, that the applicant did meet with us and our Board in May and as we have many times in the past, expressed no opposition to the continued parking use. And we'll just throw one clarification in on the, on the whole sunset clause. You know, it's obviously been placed, attached to this, to this approval for many, many years now. And part of that is, again, as Mr. Hoverson said, to encourage, you know, some potential development here. We have been working with the, the Planning Department on a possible planning study, you know, for the Bullfinch Triangle in this area, which would encompass this site. And it is my belief that, you know, if and when there is any type of proposal to develop, you know, this property based on the need and the relationship to the courthouse and other businesses in the area, in particular, the TD Garden, that, you know, this parking use will probably be incorporated to any future redevelopment. So the sunset clause, you know, in my opinion, could possibly be extended further out because, again, I do believe that any type of redevelopment on this site would likely incorporate this parking based on the needs of the community.
Thank you. Would that may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll put forward a motion of approval with the proviso that the conditionally use be in effect for five years. If everyone's amenable to that, I think it gives a little more breathing room without completely eliminating the sunset clause. And perhaps in the future, it will be revisited or the site will be redeveloped. So yeah, motion for approval with a five-year sunset clause.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Turner.
Yes.
Mr. Ekin.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries.
Next, we have case BOA 1704807 with the address of 6 Charles River Square. The applicant and/or their representative are present. Would they please explain to the Board?
If you don't have a vote, we can raise your hand. That's not a request, I mean.
Aye.
Whatnot.
Thank you for the reminder, Madam Chair. I will do that and read where we left off.
Thank you.
Give people compliments, just in case, um, men, just in case. Or, you know, yes. At this time, are there any requests for withdrawals or deferrals from the 9:30 hearing?
Okay, we need a deferral, can we raise your hand? Okay, I see your hand is J.T. Kelly. Are you more further forward, or, oh, sorry, J. Kelly, looking further forward or have a question? Set the request on review. Well, it's handled, Lord. Are no additional raises stands at the moment? Okay.
Then, who is that will return to case BOA 1704807 with the address of 6 Charles River Square. The applicant and/or their representative are present. Would they please explain to the Board?
Hi, my name's Ian Hislop, 57 Obie Street, Cambridge, Massachusetts. Here as representative for 6 Charles River Square.
Please proceed.
Great. Yeah, so this is a single family located on 6 Charles River Square. And the proposed plan is to keep it as a single family and renovate the ground floor and, which is, is existing renovated space, as well as the first floor, updating the kitchen and the existing layout, as well as updating the, the two bathrooms, one on the third floor and one on the fourth, or the top floor. If you proceed down further, the CBA request or, you know, issue was the FAR. This is an existing single family, as I mentioned earlier, with, with renovated living space on all four floors. So there'll be no addition to the, the FAR. I believe the, this was triggered as we went to pull a long-form permit. The original basement space was never permitted, which triggered the excessive FAR. No additional square footage is, is being added. There is a bay window being added on the, the first floor, which would be the, the ground level, kind of on the, on the entrance of Charles River Square. As you can see in the, the bottom right rendering, it's not visible from the street and it's, it's already been, you know, cleared with, with historic, with Nick. And it, it's also a, a design that was, was copied from the neighborhood for Charles River Square, who has gone through this process and had a bay window added, as well as the, the French doors at the ground level bringing more, more light into the living space. I guess if you could proceed down further. So, you know, at this view, you can see the, the bay window and the, the proposed French doors. Okay, continue down further. I think you can skip through that page. So this is the, yes, I'm sorry. So this is the existing floor plans. As you can see, the, the ground level, garden level, all the way to the right. It's currently existing space with a bedroom in the rear, an office in the front, a main room and a bathroom with washerdries and some utilities. And the, the level one floor plan is the kitchen, dining, living. Those will be the two floors that have the most modifications. The second and third floor, it'll just be renovating the, the bathrooms. If you could continue down further. I think that those are the existing elevations. If you could continue down. A couple more will get to the proposed plans. I don't see them. Maybe they're further up. I think, I think they're further up at the. So, right here. This is the proposed plan, as you see the garden level and the first floor continuing to be living space with an updated layout. And you can see in the rear, called the family room on the far right, the addition of the French doors. And the level-one floor plan, you can see the updated layout, keeping the kitchen in the same spot, opening the living and dining, and adding the bay window in the kitchen, which is, again, not facing the street level and can't be seen from the street. Although, this is, it's not an addition of FAR. It's an addition of a window, so.
Right. Are there questions from the board? Hearing none, is there public testimony?
Madam Chair and Board Members, C. Johnson with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This petitioner has completed the ONS community process. Our office oversaw a distribution of an informational flyer to all the butters within 300 feet, which solicited one comment expressing concern if any changes to the building would be seen from the public way. No other comments were received. The Beacon Hill Civic Association is in non-opposition to the proposal. With that background, we defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
With no raised hands at the moment? With that, may I have a motion?
Motion approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stemberich?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries, go vote.
Next, we have case BOA 1701155, with the address of 362366 Commonwealth Ave. If the applicant's and/or their representative of the president, would they please explain the case to the board?
Morning, Board. My name's Joshua Kelly. I'm representing the owners, 362-364 Commonwealth Ave. I'm the architect, the record on the project, working for Building Restoration Services. Can you, can I share? Is that okay?
No, you cannot. You have to use...
Okay. Okay, yeah, that's, it's the same thing, but that's fine. So, overview of the project. It's located at the corner of Common Mass Ave, existing building, over 100 years old. There were some existing decks that were on this roof surface that were removed due to a roof replacement project. They put a new roof covering, rubber roof down. Subsequently, the owners wanted to put the decks back in place, and we're before you today to discuss that. These are private roof decks that are accessed from a stair tower. The proposal is basically to go back in kind. I know that the letter from the reviewer said these are new decks, they're actually not new proposed decks per se, they are decks that are being replaced due to the roof replacement. So, on the top left, that's the corner of Common Mass. Top right is on, lower left is on Mass. Basically, if you want to scroll down to the elevations, that'd be great. Keep going. I'm giving you an overview of what it looks like in the street. Keep going. Keep going. Keep going, please. All right, so that right there is a view from Comm Ave. And if you, that's just overview of the building. And if you want to zoom in to the top, if you can zoom in to the top, basically at the roof level, on Comm Ave, that's Mass Ave. You go back to Comm. There you go. If we could zoom in to the roof level. So as you can see, there's existing stone balusters and stone railing that basically acts as the protective barrier for the public. Those are existing railings that have been there as part of the base building. Again, the goal is to go back with new decks, so those decks would not be seen from the street as they were before. It's all concealed behind the existing facade. There are wood-framed decks that would be basically concealed from view anywhere from the street level. If you want to scroll down, that is going to be the Mass Ave elevation, same thing. As you can see, the penthouses are concealed behind a three-and-a-half-foot brick masonry wall with stone accents and balusters. All of that decking, proposed decking, would be behind that, so it wouldn't be seen from view from anywhere, except from a helicopter. If you want to scroll down, there is another view looking from the east. Actually, I'm sorry. If you want to scroll out a little bit, that's the alley view, there's an alley behind the building, so opposite Comm Ave, there's an alley that bypasses, that comes off of Mass Ave. And then that would be the east elevation, which is adjacent to a building on the east side, basically. So, the railings shown on that were existing, those railings were removed. We're going to go back with similar railings, so there's no change there. As you can see, the, there is steel railings there, but again, those are going to go back in kind, similar to what was there before, so no change in design. And again, that's all going to be, you can't see the decking behind that, that's all concealed from the public. So that's a general overview of the project. Again, these are not decks, and I know that the letter from the reviewer, from ISD, stated that there are issues with rear yard and with building height. Obviously, the rear yard and the building height have not changed, this building's been like this for over 100 years. These decks were in place, they were dismantled. And as you can imagine, to get this stuff off the roof, we couldn't salvage it, we didn't do the work, but the materials had to come off the roof so they could re-roof the building. And then they're just looking to, the clients are just looking to basically go back in kind with the same type of decks.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Madam Chair and Board Members, C. Johnson with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This petitioner completed the ONS community process. Our office hosted an address meeting on May 14th, at which no concerns were raised. The Neighborhood Association of the Back Bay is in non-opposition to this proposal. With that background, we defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any raised hands at the moment? Great, thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stemberich?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries, go vote.
Thank you, Board, have a great day.
Next, we have case BOA 1693417, with the address of 346D Street. If the applicant's and/or their representative of the president, would they please explain the case to the board?
Okay, we do have a hand raised here, one second. Second request, unmuted.
Madam Chair, are we ready to debate again?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great, thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Johanna Schneider with the Law Firm of Hemley &amp; Barnes at 75 State Street, and I'm here on behalf of Verizon and Oliver Street Capital. With me are Derek Chin from Verizon, Mike Shunta from Oliver Street, Josh White from MPA, Ian McKinnon from Howard Stein Hudson, and Tim Hayes from Bowler. Verizon has operated a service garage and dispatch facility in this neighborhood at 649 Summer Street for the last 30 years. The site has been critical to Verizon's ability to serve residential and commercial customers in South Boston and several other Boston neighborhoods, and to support emergency services in the city. That lease is ending, which required Verizon to find a new site for these critical telecommunications operations. Verizon and Oliver Street have entered into a lease for the property at 346D Street, which until very recently was used as a contractor's yard and a crane rental facility. The site is approximately 2.5 acres in site, and is bounded by New Cypress Street, C Street, D Street, and West First Street. The site currently houses five structures, four of which are in pretty rough shape and will be demolished, and a 24,000-square-foot structure fronting on D Street will be renovated. The site is within the First Street Local Industrial Subdistrict, according to Article 68. One of the purposes of ally subdistricts is to encourage the preservation of the existing manufacturing and industrial base in a manner that is sensitive to and preserves the quality of life of the surrounding residential neighborhoods. What we are proposing does just that. The proposal itself is straightforward. We will be improving the site for use as a service garage and truck dispatch operation. It's important to note that this is not a new use for this neighborhood, but rather a relocation of a use that's been there for decades with no issues or complaints for the last 30 years. There will be approximately 87 employees at the site over two shifts. Employees will come to the site in their own cars and then go out on service calls in fleet vehicles. At the end of their shifts, employees will depart the site in their personal vehicles. During the week, there will be a day shift, Monday through Friday, when approximately 50 fleet vehicles are dispatched from the site between 6:00 AM and 7:30 AM, and then they'll return to the site between 3:00 and 4:30 PM. There will also be an evening shift, which will be Sunday evening through Friday morning, when seven or eight fleet vehicles are dispatched from the site between 8:00 and 9:00 PM, and returned to the site between 5:00 and 6:00 AM. There will also be periodic emergency calls to handle situations arising from weather, catastrophe, and the like. There will also be light routine maintenance of the fleet on-site, things like tire repair, windshield wiper replacement, and there will also be some accessory storage and new materials like cable rails and telephone poles. All of the proposed uses for the site are conditional. To accommodate Verizon's proposed uses, there will be, this is slide seven, if you want to look to that, a number of onsite improvements. We will be reconstructing and reconfiguring the existing service parking lot to accommodate approximately 115 parking spaces. These spaces will be for, in way, personal vehicle parking and fleet vehicles, and it will be in sufficient number to ensure that there will be no parking from this operation on neighborhood streets. We will be installing infrastructure to provide 35 EV spaces on day one, with future EV capacity to sustain a fully electric fleet in the future. We will be installing significant landscaping in both the interior of the site and at the perimeter, with a particular focus on the West First Street frontage. Overall, we'll be adding approximately 7,500 square feet of landscaping with a mix of canopy trees, evergreen trees, shrubs and grasses. We're also installing a new stormwater management system that will take care of all stormwater on-site. Currently, there is no stormwater management, and water simply flows into the surrounding streets. We are also adding an eight-foot-tall fence around the perimeter of the site for visual screening and security. For offsite improvements, this is slide eight, we are eliminating approximately 109 feet of existing curb cuts, including the existing curb cut on West First Street. We are going to be going from six curb cuts to three. Since this is not an Article 80 large project or small project, the project is not required to comply with complete streets, but we are looking to further align the site with complete streets guidelines, and we have committed to providing new minimum seven-foot sidewalks on C Street, D Street, and West First Street. This is a significant improvement over existing conditions, and really the most that we can do without severely impacting the functionality of the site for the telecommunications use. We're also adding bike racks for the public on D Street, sufficient to accommodate six bikes. In planning for the proposed change in use, we have been mindful to design the site to be respectful of our neighbors. As noted, we are proposing landscape buffer and overheight fencing, for which we are seeking relief to minimize visual impacts. We've deliberately laid the site out to locate noisier operations, such as the dumpster and pool storage, to the middle or the Cypress Street side of the property, well away from residential neighbors. We've worked with a CNTAC and a Crusticle consultant to develop noise mitigation measures, which include outfitting the fleet with broadband backup alarms, which means they will not make an annoying beeping sound when backing up, but will still keep workers on the site safe. We're also planning, as I mentioned, for a future electrified fleet. One benefit of that is that it will minimize noise and local air pollution emissions. All lighting on the site will be dark sky compliant, and light will be contained to the interior of the site. With respect to transportation, our traffic consultant, Howard Stein Hudson, used ITB data to analyze trip generation for the prior use and Verizon's proposed uses, and determined that there will be 54 fewer trips per day with the new uses. To limit traffic, on West First Street, we've located site entrances on C Street and D Street, and as I noted, eliminated all traffic curb cuts on West First Street. The project has gone through a robust community process. We have worked closely with representatives of the Fort Point and St. Vincent's Neighborhood Associations. It's our understanding that they are supportive of Verizon's uses, but to have some lingering concerns about the too-late entrance on C Street, given the project's location, that's sort of a transition between residential and industrial zones. To address those concerns, we have agreed to do traffic counts both before occupancy and then after three months and after six months of occupancy, and to meet with these groups to present the data. To the extent that any circulation changes are necessary to respond to study results, we will work with the neighborhood and VTD to make those adjustments. This is summarized on slide 11 of our presentation, and we would be quite happy to have those terms incorporated as a proviso to any approval that this board may grant. Speaking of provisos, before I wrap up and turn it over to board questions and comments, I want to address the Planning Department's recommendation to this board, which includes a proviso that the conditional use permit expire after three years. With all due respect to the Planning Department, a proviso with any kind of sunset on this permit is unworkable for Verizon. This is a public utility provider that requires certainty as to its operations. Verizon has a 10-year lease with a 10-year extension option, and this is candidly not the kind of operation that can easily relocate. Providing the commercial, residential, and emergency telecom services that will run out of the site takes a significant degree of coordination and logistics planning. Moreover, as we presented, there are a number of site and public realm improvements proposed as part of this change in use. It would be extremely difficult for this public company to justify that investment if the approval expires in three years or even 10 years. In the event that a sunset provision or term is included in this permit, it is highly unlikely that Verizon will move forward with its planned relocation to the site. It took a long time for Verizon to identify the site. There are just not that many suitable industrially-zoned sites left in the city. If the permit is granted with this condition that does not work, there is a good chance that these operations will have to be relocated outside of Boston, and that would directly impact Verizon's ability to timely serve the numerous residential and commercial customers based here in the city. With that, thank you for your attention. We are happy to take any questions that the board may have.
Thank you. And with that, I understand someone from Planning wants to weigh in?
Is that you, Ted? Hi, this is Ted Schwartzberg. Could you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you, Chair. This is Ted Schwartzberg, Assistant Deputy Director for Planning Review at the Planning Department. I'm covering the role that Jeff Hampton usually plays at these meetings. I wanted to just address the proviso. We did a lot of work with this proponent, as well as the Streets Cabinet staff, to ensure that the transportation impacts would be appropriate for the area, and we hadn't yet reached the finish line for those discussions when we submitted our recommendation last week. I would like the board to consider an updated proviso that addresses some of the issues that the proponent just mentioned, and we feel more comfortable about the transportation impact in light of our most recent conversations with them. So, in light of our most recent work with the proponent and the Streets Cabinet, we would like to no longer include the recommendation about a proviso limiting it to a certain number of years, and rather, we would now like to recommend that the conditional use be limited to this applicant-only Verizon, and have it be one of those provisos that limits it to this petitioner only Verizon, rather than having the sunset being tied to a certain timeline. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any further questions.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Madam Chair and Board Members, C. Johnson with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This petitioner completed the ONS community process. Our office hosted an address meeting on March 25th, at which no opposition was stated. The St. Vincent's Lower End Neighborhood Association and the Fort Point Neighborhood Association have been engaged in dialogue with the petitioner, and they are both in non-opposition to the proposal. With that background, we defer judgment to the board.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. Laura here from Council of Flames' office. Council of Flames would like to go a record and support based on a good community process with neighbors in both the St. Vincent's Lower End Neighborhood Association and Fort Point Neighborhood Association. Due to this engagement, the proponent agreed to a traffic study, both before and after Verizon will occupy the site, as well as addressing concerns for neighbors on any environmental remediation that may come about. In public realm, a pedestrian access improvement. Council of Flames respectfully requests that the proponent continue to work that the proponent continue to work closely with neighbors on any quality of life issues that may arise during the construction phase and thereafter. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. N A S R C C moderator, are you looking to get testimony here?
Yes, Madam Ambassador. Madam Chair, members of the board, good morning. This is Mayna Perez, Executive Director for the Carpenter's Labor Management. I am here to testify on support of this project and thank you so much.
Thank you. We have no additional reasons at the moment. Would that may have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll put forward a motion of approval with three provisos. One, that this approval is limited to this applicant only, as recommended by planning, with designer view, with attention to screening and buffering around public rights of way, and that the public improvements proposed are reviewed for consistency with the Complete Streets guidelines.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Tana?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
My apologies, we skipped over the preceding case. So we'll go to case B O A one-six-seven-zero-three-four-nine, with the address of five-oh-one Foilson Street. If the applicant and/or the representative present, will they please point the case report?
So if the applicant is present before you proceed, can you confirm whether or not you've received approval from A P C C to move forward?
Hi, it's Laurie. Is that you? Are you the applicant?
Hi. Yes, hi, this is Jodi Sanchez on behalf of, from Goldstone Stores, on behalf of the applicant. With respect to your question, we know that the Planning Department is recommending deferral with respect to the garage modifications, which I'm happy to walk through. We, you know, do intend to seek A P C C approval, and we expect to receive that after this meeting should be approved. We respectfully request a decision as to the garage conditional use permits with respect to, with the proviso regarding obtaining A P C C approval.
Okay, please proceed.
Thank you very much. Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Jodi Sanchez from Goldstone Stores. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, on behalf of the applicant, excuse me, T C five-oh-one Foilson Street LLC, owner of the building located at five-oh-one Foilson Street. I'm joined today by Brendan Graham on behalf of ownership and Sherry Miasman, architect from Biznick and Caulfield. The applicant is proposing the conversion of the mechanical rooftop penthouse located above the tenth floor and shown here from non-occupiable space to occupiable space for a restaurant, office, and/or amenity space, and modifications to the existing garage area, which will add fifty-three net new parking spaces. So that's from the currently approved one hundred fourteen spaces to one hundred sixty-seven spaces, and propose public parking within the building. This building is a pre-cooked structure dating back to the late nineteen thirties, early nineteen forties. It is currently used for office, retail, and accessory parking, as shown on this slide. The building straddles two different zoning districts, the B six ninety-eight district, shown here in green, which for the zoning code applies within thirty feet of the district boundary line, and the B three sixty-five district, shown in red. As shown on this slide, we respectfully requesting a variance for excessive F A R relating to the proposed rooftop conversion to accommodate a restaurant, office, and/or tenant amenity space, and three conditional use permits relating to the potential restaurant use at the rooftop, and two conditional use permits relating to the net increase of parking spaces and the additional public parking within the building. The rooftop conversion will entail the existing, excuse me, will entail converting the existing penthouse roof and floor, addition of windows, two sets of internal staircases, and relocation of the existing mechanical equipment, as shown on slide five. As previously noted, this will result in a modest increase of F A R from the, you know, from the legally non-conforming F A R of five-point, sorry, seven-point-five-eight in the B six ninety-eight portion and seven-point-seventeen in the B three sixty-five portion. Exactly the slide, thank you. And a, and so that will result in a modest increase to seven-point-nine-five F A R in the B six ninety-eight portion and seven-point-two-five in the B three sixty-five portion. This is needed because this building is a historic, is a historic building in the Back Bay Architectural District. It occupies most of the lot. The building, the product is being designed to be fully within the existing footprint of the penthouse, so there would be limited visibility. This project would not adversely affect the community or create detriments to others and is within the general, and is in general harmony with the general purpose and intent of the code. I'll turn it over to Sherry to quickly walk through the rooftop slides. Sherry?
Good morning, Sherry Miasman. The rooftop that we're turning into a much better use of a rooftop to be used by either tenants or restaurant people is going to stay within the same footprint as it is right now. We're not expanding it. We're not creating additional railing. The parapet is the correct height. You're not going to be seeing much from down below. Also, the surrounding of this existing mechanical penthouse, the outside of it is going to be reskinned with glass, so the existing metal that's not very tightly is going to be removed into a translucent glass, so people can exit onto the patio space. And all the footprints and all the heights are going to remain the same. And this is the view of how it's going to come to an end with it being activated with nicer materials and some greenery. And the greenery will be planted not, will be planted in a pot versed on the ground. These are just showing the existing penthouse being full of mechanical units that are not needed anymore. And we're going to be demolishing and turning into a useful living space for tenants or restaurant users.
Are you also walking us through the garage plans?
I am. Thank you so much, Sherry.
Okay, thank you.
So with respect to the garage, we are seeking conditional use permits with respect to the modest increase of parking spaces and the introduction of public parking. This slide here is the existing parking, which you can see accommodates one hundred and fourteen spaces. The changes are being, the changes to the garage area are being proposed to help serve existing tenant parking needs as well as attract and retaining tenants of the building, which is particularly important given the impacted commercial occupancy rates in Boston. This modest increase is also appropriate as this building is within the two major commercial corridors of the city on Goldstone and Numberry Streets. And it's a very modest increase of spaces, given the size of the building. This, the increase of spaces will all exist within the existing garage footprint. The same entrance and exits will be used. There will be no additional curb cuts, and valet will be on-site to ensure no external queuing.
So can we show us where the additional spaces are? Is there a slide with the additional spaces?
Yes. So this slide shows a few restripes spaces. And then the subsequent slide shows the addition of fifteen spaces.
Okay, is that the end of your presentation?
That is, yes, that's the conclusion of the presentation. And I'm happy to answer questions that the board may have.
Thank you. May I get from Planning? Who's on from Planning Department? Is it still Jack? Yeah, okay. And, sorry, someone just, just, and the, okay, yeah, Planning Department. I'm going to make you a panelist. We can unmute this call.
My apologies for the staff who are there. My name is Will Cohen. I'm from the Planning Department. We're taking shifts, so Jack was off. Now it's me for the next hour. For this case, we recommended deferral originally because we didn't have the A P C C recommendations. But barring that, our recommendation noted that all the other issues warrant relief. And so as long as parking is acceptable, we are, all of our, sort of the aggregate of our recommendations are still in effect.
Okay, questions from the board?
Madam Chair, one quick question. I know we always go to the parking. You've got all the other good things going on here, so very, very nice to see what's proposed for the building. Is this all proposed to be valet parking? I see there's a lot of tandem or more-than-tandem parking, so I just don't know where that item is being dealt with in terms of how that's actually being managed as a feasible option for this.
Hi, this is Brendan Graham. Oh, sorry.
Thank you, coming.
Yeah, this is Brendan Graham from Dubie on behalf of ownership. Yes, this is currently ran as valet parking exclusively for our tenants. We would continue to run it in that fashion with a class A parking operator, as you already mentioned, to make sure that there was no queuing in the public roads.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none. May I have a public testimony?
Madam Chair and Board Members, Siggy Johnson with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This petitioner completed the O N S community process. Our office hosted an a-butter's meeting on May sixth of this year, at which no concerns were raised. The Neighborhood Association of the Back Bay is in non-opposition to this proposal. With that background, we defer judgment to the board.
Thank you. Okay, Madam Mayna?
Thank you, Madam Ambassador. Ambassador, Madam Chair and members of the board, this is Mayna Perez, representing the Carpenter's Union. We'd like to go and recommend support of this proposal.
Thank you. We have no additional reasons at the moment. Okay, so what I heard was a pending A P C C on the parking, and then there's a matter of the rooftops use. So may I have a motion?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'm happy to make a motion. I think that we, you know, what we've seen is helpful. I guess I'll make a motion for approval with a, I guess I, we can, I can hear from others. I'll make a motion for approval with the proviso that the Air Pollution Control Commission approve the parking plan.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
No, I'm just not comfortable without the approval from the A P C C. And I, you know, the planning memo notes that no recommendation on the appropriateness of the parking can be made without an A P C C determination. So with that said, I was okay with everything else, but no due to the parking.
Ms. Tana?
No.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
The chair votes no, the motion does not carry. So I might suggest two motions as an alternative.
I vote Mr. Langham.
Oh, did I miss you? I'm so sorry, Mr. Langham.
Yes, ma'am.
I am so sorry, Mr. Langham.
I vote no.
Okay, so the motion does not carry. Is there another motion? Or motions?
One.
How about we break them up? Is there a motion on the rooftop use?
Motion to approve the rooftop use and the variances in accordance with that use specifically.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Tana?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Now a motion on the parking spaces.
I make a motion to approve the parking spaces before the, that there's, um...
So I'm going to suggest another motion because that was already, well, you can try it, go ahead.
No, I thought, I didn't, I'm sorry. I didn't hear that there had to be approval from the A P C C, but maybe I'm wrong.
There does have to be approval from A P C C, yes.
Yeah, I did forget.
Madam Chair, I apologize for interrupting. May I suggest a deferral on parking as opposed to...
That's where I'm going with, so.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So a motion to defer on the parking? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to defer on the parking. And I have just a request, maybe for city staff and planning. I have my little zoning book out, and it looks like there's additional conditions for a parking facility in a restricted parking district. If, next time, I know, you know, if there was no A P C C approval, but if next time, if, maybe the memo could get into those a little bit. Because it's unclear to me whether adding more parking would trigger those conditions. So I will just motion to defer.
I will pass that along, that feedback.
Is there a second?
Second.
So to defer the parking use. Mr. Stembridge?
Ah, yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Tana?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
And then the dates for deferral, we could do August twelfth, August twenty-sixth, September ninth, September twenty-third, August seventh.
So my question would be, when are you before the A P C C? Because you shouldn't come back before us before that. A question to the applicant, yep.
Yes, Madam Chair, because there's no August A P C C hearing, the next hearing date would be in September.
Okay, so did one of those September dates to come back here work for you? Or do you want an October date?
So the September date, September seventeenth, I believe.
Works for you. Was that a, was that a date at all?
So we could do September twenty-third or October seventh.
September twenty-third would be great.
Okay, thank you. We will see you then.
Many thanks.
Next. Next, we have B O A one-seven-one-six-nine-two-nine, with the address of twelve-seventy-four Massachusetts Avenue. If the applicant and/or, I believe, attorney Marancy are present.
Just a reminder, we have six Article Eights. Please be cutie.
And this is our Eight case, yes. If the applicant or their representative would, would let the board know what this case is?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Stembridge. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Marancy. I'm an attorney for business, address of three-fifty West Burnaway, Telkot, Boston. I represent the applicant and petitioner, Alvin Moore LLC, and his principal, George Architectural Services, are being provided by Rhodey Architects. Michael Delafay from Rhodey is with us today. We'll present the project plans in a moment. As Mr. Stembridge noted, this is an Article eighty small project and has been approved by the V P D A board. The proposed project consists of a new six-story mixed-use building located at twelve-seventy-four Massachusetts Avenue in Dorchester. The building will contain forty-five residential apartment units. The building will contain forty-five residential apartment units and one approximately nine-hundred-and-fifty-square-foot floor commercial unit. The project will also feature a landscaped public terrace and plaza funding on Massachusetts Avenue, secure storage for forty-six bicycles, ten visitor bike spaces, and twenty-five accessory off-street motor vehicle parking spaces located in the building's basement level enclosed parking garage. The garage will be entered and exited through an existing curb cut and ramp, which currently serves, uh, the six-story mixed-use building located next door at 1258 Massachusetts Avenue, which is also owned by this petitioner. The site, which is approximately seventeen thousand one hundred and twenty square feet, is a block-through lot running from Massachusetts Avenue back to Boston Street, and is located within two zoning sub-districts. An LC local convenience sub-district on the Massachusetts Avenue side of the site, and a 3F 5,000 sub-district on the Boston Street side of the site. As will become evident when Mike Delafay walks the way through the plan set, the building was carefully designed to be responsive to and respectful of the two different architectural typologies and the massing and scale of both the Mass Avenue and the Boston Street sides of this site. While the building's dimensions exceed the limitations of the zoning code, it is nonetheless a proposed development that is site-appropriate, and as the BPDAs board memo notes, contextually responsive, as the building makes, um, use of setbacks, steps massing, and open space, uh, as well as private entrances on the more traditionally residential Boston Street side of the site in order to bring, uh, the building into massing context, uh, with its, uh, location. The zoning refusal letter cites a number of essentially duplicative zoning violations because they arise under both LC and 3F 5,000 zoning. Relief is required for the proposed multifamily use, which is forbidden under 3F 5,000 zoning and is conditional under LC zoning. The zoning refusal letter cites the need for a conditional use permit under LC zoning for a general retail business, uh, but the, the general retail business is then, uh, defined by the code, is a large retail use, such as a department store. The permit application here described the actual proposed use in this building as retail space, uh, which is what it would be. It's, uh, nine-hundred-and-fifty square feet, so it is not a general retail business. Uh, the, uh, retail space that is programmed in the building and, uh, which was included in the permit application is actually an allowed use in the LC zoning, uh, which covers the Mass side of the building where that proposed use is located. There's a violation cited for excessive floor area ratio. The proposed FAR is approximately two-point-seven, uh, whereas the maximum allowed by zoning is point-five under 3F zoning and one in the LC sub-district. Variance is also necessary for excessive building height, which is six stories and approximately sixty-seven feet, uh, or approximately on par with the abutting building at 1258 Massachusetts Avenue. Maximum allowed zoning heights are thirty-five feet and two-and-a-half stories, uh, in the 3F sub-district, and forty feet with no story height restriction, uh, in, uh, the LC zoning sub-district. All setbacks, as well as usable open space requirements, are zoning compliant. Variances are required, however, for insufficient off-street parking and insufficient off-street loading. The building, as I noted, will include twenty-five off-street parking spaces for the forty-five proposed rental apartments. The ratio, which was reviewed and approved by City Planning and Transportation Staff, this ratio was deemed adequate owing to the fact that this will be a rental building and also due to the site's approximately thirteen-minute walking distance to and from the Red Lines JFK station. There are also rest stops for routes 816 and 17, located one to three minutes away, uh, on both Massachusetts Avenue and Boston Streets. The site enjoyed a transit score of seventy, a bike score of seventy-three, and a walk score of ninety-one. Finally, owing to, um, the time its Article application, Article 8 application was filed, this project is subject to the IDP policy requiring thirteen percent affordability. Despite this fact, the petitioner will be providing eight IDP rental units, uh, four one-bedroom units and four two-bedroom units at seventy percent AMI. This represents seventeen-point-eight percent affordability, well in excess, uh, of what is required. With that, Madam Chair, unless there's a question on the zoning issues, I would propose to, uh, to turn the presentation over to Mike Delafay, who will briefly take the board through the, uh, through the project plans.
Briefly, please.
Uh, thank, thank you very much. Um, Madam Chair, members of the board, this is Mike Delafay, uh, an architect at Rhodey Architects, business address of 535 Albany Street. Um, Madam Ambassador, would you please go to slide number nine? I'd like to quickly just give you some visuals to George's overview. Right here, yes. So I just wanted to point out a couple of key features that are here with the, with the building. Uh, the building is sandwiched between Boston Street and Mass Ave, and at the corner of Columbia Road. Uh, this gives us, uh, some very unique architectural opportunities. Um, so I'd like to just show you those, and that's, uh, slide twelve, please. Um, so as Mr. Marancy, uh, referenced, uh, the building does, uh, fit into its context. So we're working with a six-story approach that nestles nicely onto Mass Ave, with its adjoining parcel to the north. Um, and then we're using a much finer grain of architecture that is along the Boston Street side, uh, in, in tune with the residential, uh, bay-window fronts that are on Boston Street, and that is a four-story, uh, walk-up, uh, condition. Um, and then just to go to the site plan on slide number thirteen, I just would like to show you some more of the site improvements. So as, uh, we mentioned, um, starting on the right-hand side of the page, uh, we have a small retail, uh, with a, a small, uh, access plaza, um, to, of Mass Ave. And then between 1272 and our proposal, uh, there is a terrace, uh, that will be available for the retail to use, um, and residences. Um, and then in the south, uh, western corner, you'll see the main lobby to the building coming off of Mass Ave. Um, and as we sort of make our way over to the Boston Street side, uh, we do have a series of walk-up conditions and, uh, sunken patios for the residents. Um, this is in tune with the architectural character of Boston Street. Uh, and then we are surrounding the site with, um, uh, new street trees, um, and, and landscape. Um, all transformers will be, um, shielded with the landscape. Uh, and then lastly, just to give you some more visuals and some materiality, uh, slides seventeen and nineteen, please. Right here, so we felt it was very important to use, uh, rich, rich, uh, materials here. So this is the Boston Street side. Uh, we have, um, a three-decker to our, uh, left-hand side, and then a series of brick row homes to our right-hand side. Uh, we wanted to make sure we were tying into those brick, uh, row homes, so you'll see a series of brick, uh, and metal, uh, metal, um, bays, uh, with, of course, metal stoops that lead up to the, uh, to the residences. And lastly, if we just go to the, uh, slide nineteen, of course, giving you a little bit more of how we wanted to make sure that the building didn't feel like it had a front and a back, so, uh, we are showing a masonry or terracotta, uh, Mass Ave side of the building with some metal panel, but making sure that the building had, uh, some familiarity, uh, from each side of the project. So, uh, there's really no back of the building, there is just simply two sides and two fronts. Um, so we wanted to make sure that the architecture was rich. I will, uh, defer to the board for any questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you, that's great. Um, are you aware of, uh, some comments from the Disabilities Commission? If not, I can read them. Mr. Marancy?
If you could read them, Ms. Mar, I have no opinion.
Units 207, 209, and 210 labeled as duplexes appear to be multi, multi-level units with only stairs as vertical access. As they are group-one units, there must be an accessible route between levels, either a ramp, raft, lift, or elevator. I'll start with that one, there are two others.
The, uh, each duplex unit, uh, is accessible via an elevator.
Okay.
So there's an internal stair, but there is also access on each floor.
Right. There does not appear to be an accessible route to units 105, 106, 107, and 108. All units must have an accessible route to them from an accessible entrance.
Uh, all units in the building are, are accessible via an elevator.
Okay. In addition, all public entrances must be accessible, including both entrances of the retail area.
The retail space is also accessible by Mass Ave by a, uh, accessible route.
Okay, great, thank you. Questions from the board?
Yeah, I have, I have a small question. Maybe I might have missed something. Um, I didn't hear anything about a handicap unit.
Um, so the, the building will be required to have, uh, both group-one, uh, accessible units, which are, um, group-one and modifiable, and then, uh, given the amount of units that we have, I believe we'll have two group, uh, two units, uh, which will have adaptable kitchens, uh, and, uh, bathrooms.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Morning, this is Zoe Schudt, I'm a project manager in the Development Review Division of the Planning Department. I hear they're expressing Planning Department's support of the project. They filed their SPRA with us on July 29th, 2024, and they were approved by the BPDAs board on September 12th, um, 2024. We hosted a virtual public meeting on August 24th, and the project team also conducted independent community outreach. Um, we're happy to see the project move forward and progress to the design review phase of Article 80 and defer to this board for any further action. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, calling in with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time the Mayor's Office had to defer to the judgment of this board. Uh, as you heard, uh, this went through a Boston Planning-like community process, which also involved a meeting with the McCormick Civic Association, yeah, the civic for this group. Uh, they voted overwhelmingly to support the project, uh, fifteen support, five against. Uh, prior to this, uh, community process, uh, this has been a long since, uh, vacant parcel. The information will defer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board, Liam Ramis from Councilor's Office. Uh, would you like to make an approval proposal? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, Minna, we're gonna get testimony, please.
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam Ambassador. Madam Chair, members of the board, this is Madam Perez, representing the carpenters' union. I'd like to go and record and support the project.
We have no additional race stands at the moment. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I put forward a motion of approval. Um, I think this is an appropriate location for forty-five units of housing. Uh, I think the number of affordable units and levels of affordability, um, are really commendable as well as the sensitivity of this design to both street fundages that the project funds.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yep.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Eakin?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have two companion cases. First is case BOA 1720111, with the address of 45 Solares Road. Along with that, we have case BOA 1720105, with the address of 51 Solares Road. If the applicant and/or their representative, or I believe, his attorney Small, would...
You have a motion.
...inform the board of the case?
Yes, Mr. Stenbridge, thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, attorney Derek Small, have a business address of 51 Thompson Road. Today, and with me today is the owner of the property.
Can you please mute anyone, Madam Ambassador, who's not speaking?
And with me today is, uh, the owner of the property, Mr. Tony Barrows. Madam Chair, we're here today to, um, seeking relief to combine and subdivide the parcel, erect a two-family dwelling on the newly created lot, which, the new lot is approximately eleven thousand square feet. Uh, the zoning sub-district carries a 2F 5,000. And again, the newly created lot is eleven thousand one hundred and twenty-five square feet. Um, the violations are as follows. Um, there is a, um, existing three-family on the lot. Um, so that the violation for that is a, um, non-conforming use change of the existing building. And then with regard to the forty-five Solares, which we will be, um, erecting the new two-family dwelling, we have three violations, uh, insufficient side yard setback, insufficient rear yard and lot width. If you scroll through to the site plan, you'll see that, you go back up one. Um, the not, the lot, show them, Lot A, it starts out narrow and flares out in the rear. The siding of the building will be more towards the back of, of the property. And with regard to side yard, uh, ten feet is the requirement, and, uh, I don't think we are, um, but creating a violation there, but they're siding us for it. Um, and we do have, um, on that side of the property, we have a driveway for, for the five parking spots. Um, again, the units will be three-bedroom, two-bath, and are approximately nineteen-hundred square feet. And, um, that's it. Pretty, pretty basic. Again, we're, it's two-family on a eleven-thousand-square-foot lot.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Good morning, Madam Chair, my name's Eddie Conley, uh, from Councilor's Ben's office. Just wanted to go on record on behalf of the office that, um, the councilors in support of this project. Thank you.
Madam Chair and members of the board, for the record, my name is Jeremy Bembry. I am the High Park Community Engagement Specialist for the Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant has completed the community process, which consisted of an avoidance meeting facilitated on February 25th, where avoidance inquiries and concerns for parking were addressed during the meeting. Next, the proposal was presented to Reedville Watch Neighborhood Association, who voted in support of the proposal. Thank you for your time in the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, we'll take it to the board with it, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Madam Chair, looks like we have no additional race stands at the moment. Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
I'll put forth a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Uh, yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Eakin?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries, go on.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Just real quick, um, is there a design view attached to that, or not?
Do you want design, does planning want design review?
If you told me that.
Does planning want design review?
They want design review by Parks and Rec, that's it.
Well, I was asking about, 'cause there's no job today, so is there someone from planning who can speak to whether you actually want design review?
Um, I believe that's correct. I mean, I will double-check that right now, one moment. It's embarrassing.
We'll just assume design review, Mr. Small.
Okay, no problem, just wanna make that clear.
No, it's correct, it's Parks and Rec.
All right, the plans be submitted to Parks and Rec, that is, that is what is requested.
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much, have a good day.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1692668, with the address of 14 Tarleton Road. If the applicant and/or their representative approve, they'll please find the case with the board.
Okay, Don, I'm sending my request to make you a panelist, I can press accept, and then you'll be able to unmute yourself. Please talk to me, yes?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, but you can hear me now, though.
Okay, good morning. Um, I'm Don Coleman, um, good morning, Chair and members. Um, I'm owner of 14 Tarleton Road, uh, with my wife Christine. Uh, we're in the midst of a project, uh, ALT 1488783, which approves a front porch and, and stairs. Uh, we filed, we filed this current amendment, uh, seeking a variance for an extended front deck, uh, adding two feet to our approved four feet for a total width of six feet. Um, as stated, uh, we seek to accommodate wheelchair access and maneuverability onto the porch. We designed the house with my mother's visits in mind, uh, for the most part, uh, but the proposed porch is currently tight. Since we filed this appeal, we are also, uh, considering a stair lift in the front, so having a wider porch... so having a wider porch would enable this plan, if we determine to go, go that route. I'm sorry, I should have. And, I'm open, we're open to any questions.
Okay. Other questions from the board? Hearing none. May we have public testimony?
Madam Chair and board members, Ciggy Johnson with the mayor's office of Neighborhood Services. This petitioner completed the ONS community process. Our office oversaw distribution of an informational flyer to each of other within a three-hundred-foot radius of the property in question, which solicited no comments to our office. The West Roxbury Neighborhood Council is in support of this application. With that background, we defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? You have no race stands. Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yep.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck, sir.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, as we just approached the eleven o'clock hour, I will ask if there are any requests for withdrawals or deferrals from the eleven o'clock hour?
Not some race stands at the moment.
And with that, we return to nine-thirty a.m. cases. Next, we have case BOA one-seven-zero-one-four-four-zero, the address of fifteen Worker Hill Road. The applicant, and/or their representative, were present, would they please explain to the board?
Can you raise your hand if you're on for this proposal? Fifteen Worker Hill Road, are you on? Okay, let's keep going.
Please. Next, we have case BOA one-seven-zero-three-eight-eight-one, with the address of twenty-nine Vermont Street. If the applicant, and/or their representative, were present, would they please apply?
Good morning, Madam Chair and board. It's Derek Rubenoff calling from, excuse me, sorry, somebody rang me on my telephone. Did a little metal slip there. Derek Rubenoff from Derek Rubenoff Architect, eighty-two eighty-four Spring Street, West Roxbury, representing the, the applicants, Andrew and Brianna Lookin. So, appreciate your attention this morning to the project. It's really a pretty simple project. It's just a second-floor addition over an existing garage, for a master suite, for a, for a growing family here in West Roxbury. So, it's, the difference is about roughly three hundred square feet or so. And, the only thing that we need is zoning relief for is the, is the side yard. The, the difference is, twelve feet is required. Actually, we have a narrow lot, so ten point nine feet is required on the right side. And what's proposed is seven point four feet, so we're just a little bit short. If we go toward the, yeah, you can see, if you zoom in there, it's a very, very, very deep lot, although the grade declines toward the back there. So, it's not, doesn't make a lot of sense to try to build to the back because of the, the change of grade. They just want to have a little more room on their second floor, so, without really changing much at all of the footprint below. In fact, we're not getting any closer to the side yard than what's existing right now. This is an extension of, of existing nonconformity, essentially. It makes sense to just build on top of the garage here. And if we skip toward the end, we can actually see the, we can see the, the three-D views. We're not going any taller than the, than the height of the building, as it is right now. We're not violating the maximum height or anything like that. I think the last page probably has the three views, which would probably be most helpful to take a look at. Yeah, so, what you can see here on the left is the existing. So, it's a single-car garage to the right of this single-family house. And the middle views are demo, and out on the right is proposed. So, there's a little bit of an overhang on the front and the back, but that's in architectural context with the existing garrison style of the house. And there's just a very minor footprint increase to the back of the existing kitchen on the first floor. But other than that, it's just an extension of existing nonconformity.
Thank you. Other questions from the board? Hearing none. May I have public testimony?
Madam Chair and board members, Ciggy Johnson with the mayor's office of Neighborhood Services. This petitioner completed the ONS community process. Our office hosted an abutters meeting on April twenty-third, at which no concerns about the design were raised. Our offices received three letters of support from abutters that have been forwarded to the board. The West Roxbury Neighborhood Council is in support of this application. With that background, we defer to the board's judgment. Thank you.
Yes, nobody's standing at the moment. With that, may I have a motion?
I put a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Come on.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA one-six-nine-eight-seven-six-five, with the address of forty-four Cass Street. If the applicant, and/or their representative, were present, would they please explain to the board?
Second last time. Zach, I just sent a request to Major Panalas. If you're on for this proposal, you can unmute yourself.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Hi, how's it going?
Good. Please proceed with your name and address for the record.
Uh, yeah, Zach, because that's gate three eighty-seven Page Street, Stoughton, Massachusetts, here for Kevin Zinchak of forty-four Cass Street, West Roxbury. So, what we have here is a pre-existing house. We're doing a second-floor addition. And the existing house is non-conforming to the current zoning laws, so we're just building straight up, and we have a proposed second-story deck that is four feet into the setback.
Questions from the board? Hearing none. May I have public testimony?
Madam Chair and board members, Ciggy Johnson with the mayor's office of Neighborhood Services. This petitioner has completed the ONS community process. Our office hosted an abutters meeting on April thirtieth, at which no concerns were raised. The West Roxbury Neighborhood Council is in support of this application. With that background, we defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Mr. Funbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA one-seven-two-three-nine-seven-five, with the address of one-thirty-one North Street. If the applicant, and/or their representative, were present, would they please explain to the board?
Good morning, Madam Chairman and members of the board. Appreciate all of your time and consideration for this application. My name is Malcolm Sweeney. I am one of the owners of this property, and I would like to defer to our attorney, Chris Harrington, at this moment. I'm not sure if he's a, I think he is, might be a participant at the moment, but he, he should be on and available to speak.
Can he raise his hand? So, Jessica, can I identify him? Okay, just the head. All right, Chris Harrington.
Good morning. This is attorney Christopher Harrington. For the record, my residential address is at twenty-one Pleasant Hill Avenue in Matapan, and my office is located in Quincy Center. Madam Chair, board members, thank you for being here. I know this meeting's going on long, and I will try to keep this as quick as possible. On the first plan that you're looking at is the proposed floor plan for this house. What we are beginning with is a two-family house that was built in nineteen hundred, and it's on an eighty-seven hundred square foot lot, approximately eighty-seven hundred square feet. If you look at this plan, the basement floor plan on the left, you'll see the shaded area to the back of the house, and you'll also see a shaded area on the front-left corner of the house. Those are the areas that are new footprint, that are being added to the house. And both of those areas are being added for two reasons. One, for some additional, additional floor area for the home, and also to improve the staircases that will run from the, from the basement level all the way up to the third floor. The house currently does not have code-compliant staircases to the upper floors. The rare staircase of the house is an exterior staircase, which obviously is not safe in the wintertime. And so, that, that's what most of the improvements that are being made to this house are to bring this, to bring this house up.
I think we lost your attorney.
All right. Sorry about that.
I don't know if you can continue, or if he is able to jump back on.
Yeah.
Madam Chair?
Are you back?
I can see myself on the screen. Yeah, I am. Thank you. I can see the green, green circle on myself now.
Great.
Let me begin again. I thought that you could hear me earlier when I was, when I had my.
You can hear me, host. We heard you up until thirty seconds ago.
All right, so we have, so we're beginning with a, with a two-family house that was built in nineteen hundred. This house is, it's an old house. It hasn't received any significant repairs or upgrades in the last hundred and twenty-five years. And it needs, it needs a full-cut rehab. We're proposing to expand the footprint of the house in order for, to add some more floor area, to make the apartments larger, and also new staircases to serve all three floors of the building. What we are proposing is a three thousand, four hundred and seventy-seven gross square foot, three-family house with eight bedrooms. Of the variants that we need, we need a variance, a used variance, to have a three-family in the two-family five thousand square foot zone. And we also need a variance for the, having a full third floor. The zone allows a two-and-a-half story, and with our plans with two, with two full dormers on the third floor, it will become a three-story house. If you move down on the plans, the exterior style of the building is traditional New England residential styling, and it is designed to fit in perfectly with the neighborhood, with the other homes that are from the same era. Is the, the parking layout included in the plans? Yeah, thank you. The other major improvement that we're making to this property is that right now it's a two-family house with a small driveway on the left-hand side for one car. And so, cars are parking on the street. We're proposing to extend the driveway down the property to the back and create a parking area for five cars. The five cars will accommodate the parking for the three units. Also, with those automobiles will be a retaining wall that will be, will be built around the parking area. And we've, we've also proposed having solid fencing and landscaping on both sides of the parking area to screen the parking area from the abutters and to prevent any headlights from shining onto the abutters' properties. Along with our plans, we've submitted to you, I submitted to you a zoning memorandum going through the, the legal aspects of this. We were submitting to you that this property is entitled to zoning relief, if you so choose to grant it. We do have circumstances relating to the topography and the existing condition of the, of the house that's on the property right now that create a hardship. The hardship, as I stated, is the expense of having to renovate this very old house, as well as the cost of building the retaining walls and the landscaping in order to accommodate the parking in the rear yard. We're only asking for one additional unit, so we believe that we're asking for the minimum amount of relief necessary in order to address this, the financial hardship of this project. And, and as far as the project in relation to the neighborhood, what we're proposing is modest in size. It's complementary to the other homes that are already in the neighborhood. And it's, and it's appropriate to the existing, the existing neighborhood. Also, I want to point out that we're, we're proposing one, only one unit, and the units we're proposing have, you know, adequate number of bedrooms in order to accommodate families, if a family chose to live here, individuals or families, with adequate off-street parking, so that this house will not negatively impact the existing neighbors or the on-street parking that exists today. If you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them.
Can you, can you just explain what is there? What is where you propose the parking now?
There is, that is the backyard of the property. If you, looking at this screen, it's a, it's a wooded lot. And so, the white area in the back is, is a lot of trees. It's open space. We're not planning on touching any of that. The area, however, where the, where the cars are, and the shaded area, any trees that are in the middle of the lot in that area would have to be removed in order to do this project. However, we're not planning on removing any of the trees that are located on the left or right-hand side of the lot, unless they absolutely have to be removed in order to put the parking in. We've, we've engaged an engineering firm from Waymouth Hardy Man Design Group to design, to prepare our application with the Boston Water and Sewer Commission, assuming you approve this project. And part of their proposal is, is to, to design a stormwater management system for this parking area. So, there will be a catch basin, and there will be underground infiltrators beneath this parking lot to capture the stormwater and infiltrate it, so that it doesn't run off uncontrolled onto any of the abutting properties.
Questions from the board?
Madam Chair, I ask, how tall is the retaining wall going to be?
Well, well, oh, sorry. The retaining wall is ten to twelve feet, if it's built as a single wall. One of the items Hardy and Man is working on is, is to design a terrace retaining wall, where there'll be approximately a five-foot wall with, with more green space, and then a second five-foot wall, so it's not one continuous wall.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I think I agree with the planning department's recommendation on reducing the parking, so I'll just leave it at that.
Any other questions from the board?
If you mind, if I made one comment regarding reducing the parking. We, we designed it with five spaces to, to comply with the one point seven-five spaces per unit for this zone. One of the members of the Neighborhood Association, the Austin-Brighton Neighborhood Association, asked us that question, "Do you really need five parking spaces? Could you have less?" We certainly could. We designed it with the five spaces to comply with the parking ratio. If we did have less parking behind us, the retaining walls would not have to extend as far into the lot, and we would be able to do less site work and have, you know, a smaller retaining wall. So, that's certainly something that we're willing to consider.
Thank you. Other questions from the board?
How many trees are we talking about, the board?
Sir, I do, I do not know how many trees are on the site that will have to come down.
Okay. With that, may I have a public testimony?
Madam Chair and board members, Ciggy Johnson with the mayor's office of Neighborhood Services. This petitioner completed the ONS. This petitioner completed the ONS community process. Our office hosted an Abutter's meeting on May 12, at which an Abutter was opposed due to the increase in density and the potential loss of trees. Petitioner presented to the Brighton-Austin Improvement Association, which supported the proposal with a request for design review of the parking and pavers. With that background, we defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we have a few reasons. Anyone else from the Abutter's office? Annabella?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Annabella Gomes from the Brighton-Austin Improvement Association. We voted to support the project as the house does need repair. We did ask for design review. We were a little concerned about the design of the terrace and how many trees were going to be taken down and if all the parking was needed. And we would like to have maybe possible permeable pavers, you know, for the groundwater and everything. Thank you.
Stuart?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Good morning, Madam Chair and board members. My name is Stuart Parsons. I'm a resident at 133 Non-Antim Street, direct to Butter. I did speak at the Butters' meeting, and I'm speaking on behalf of 133 Non-Antim Street Condominium Association. We are a two-family building. And we are in opposition to the relief being sought. I want to bring attention to a letter that was sent via email. Sorry, there was some noise there. I don't know if that, just want to repeat that. We are, I want to bring attention to a letter that I sent via email, and I realize that it was sent later than the 48 hours prior to this meeting, but I just wanted to make sure it was received and noted by the board, and appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. All right. We have no additional reasons at the moment. Okay. Anything the applicant would like to add based on new feedback?
Yeah, Madam Chair, we had, I believe there was a letter of support submitted by the city council. We have some communications with the city council's office at the very beginning of this process. It came early this week. She made the request of having pervious pavers in the backyard, which we said we were happy to do that. The only thing that I would raise is that the driveway itself, just for safety purposes and snow and ice removal, would be paved. But we said that the area behind the house where the cars are could certainly be done in pervious pavers to reduce the stormwater runoff.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll put forward a motion of approval with a proviso that plans are submitted to the planning department for a design review to reduce the number of off-street parking from five spaces to no more than three. And that's with the goal of retaining trees on the lot, reducing hardscape, and aligning with the parking condition with the city's recommended maximums in the area.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stunbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Turner? Mr. Eakin?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board.
Next, we have case BOA 1716536 with the address of 83 Leo M. Birmingham Parkway. If the applicant and/or, and this is also PSNR verification.
And so just a reminder, this is only the second of six, so please be patient. Thank you.
If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain to the board?
Hello, members of the board. Chairman Dong and all members of the Board of Appeals. My name is Paula Devereaux. I'm an attorney with Pierce Atwood, and I'm here on behalf of 83 Leo Property LLC requesting conditional use permits and variances for the construction of a new building at 83 Leo M. Birmingham Parkway. The existing building that's on the site and the radio tower will be demolished, and a new building will be constructed. The project in sight are located in the Western Avenue Soldiers Field Road, CC1 Community Commercial Subdistrict, and the appeal is from a refusal letter issued by ISD on April 25, 2025. They are finding violations requiring conditional use permits for residential use in the basement first story and for the Green Belt Protection of the Lake District. There are no residents in the basement, but there are residents in the first story of the building. The project also requires variances for floor area ratio and for height. The maximum height in this subdistrict is 35 feet. The height of the project is 85 feet. The maximum FAR is 1.0, and the FAR of the project is 3.47. One of the, probably the most basic reason for the variances is a significant grade change of 25 feet because the project fronts on both Leo M. Birmingham Parkway and Soldiers Field Place. And there's a 25-foot drop in grade from Leo M. Birmingham Parkway to Soldiers Field Place. The requested variances are to prevent a substantial hardship for the project due to the significant grade changes, which is a condition that affects the parcel only and does not apply elsewhere in the zoning district. And the requested conditional use permits satisfy the requirements of the code for each conditional use. I'm going to turn this over now to Todd Fremont-Smith on behalf of the applicant, and also to Tamara Roy, the architect from Stantec, to walk you through the project.
Can you hear me?
Madam Chair, Todd Fremont-Smith with Nordblom Company. If you could go back to the first slide. It will be very brief, I promise. Thank you. So as Paula said, this is a 333-unit building, proposed with 52 affordable units. To go to the next slide. We've been through an exhaustive neighborhood process beginning in 2022. I won't speak for the neighborhood groups, but we did meet extensively with both Brighton-Austin and Austin Civic, as well as Leo Birmingham Park Trust next door. And the project was approved by the BPDA in April. Go to the next slide. I'll let Tamara take it from here for a few slides.
Thanks. Hi, everyone. Yeah, we'll keep it quick. The site is really amazing. It's right on the edge of a new neighborhood that, as you can see in our drawing, is sort of part of the Charles River Basin as opposed to sort of a little separated from the traditional Brighton neighborhood to our right. But it has phenomenal connections to Boston Landing T and a lot of great bus and bike access. Next. This is the existing site. There is a grove of trees. Very important to us as we started designing this project to keep as much of that old growth as possible. But as you heard, there's a 25-foot drop from Leo Birmingham at the top to Soldiers Field Place in the bottom. And it's almost all hard surface and paved areas other than the trees right now. Next.
This is just, we did study the neighborhood for precedent massing and FAR. So this is just a slide showing many of the projects that have gone before us in the creation of this new neighborhood, all of which fall between 3 and 4.0 FAR. So we feel like we've stayed right in that window.
Okay, next slide. So these are just diagrams to see how we tucked the parking into that 25-foot grade change so that the building on top, number two, was really, you know, hiding the parking completely. But yet the parking is still, because it's above-grade technically, counted in our height because it's not below grade. And then you can see in number three, there's actually like a road diet that Leo Birmingham is being put on. Thank you, DCR. After all the public push for that, that road is shrinking to half its width, and then all of the rest of the area is actually being put in front of our project with a multi-use trail and more trees that we're planting. Next. So then in terms of the variance for the ground floor units, we've kind of got two ground floors. So on the upper-left plan, you can see that, you know, this is not a wonderful site for commercial use. So we've put the yellow areas, which are sort of active lobbies and dog areas and bike parking where we can to activate the ground floors. And then otherwise, we've actually put terrace units. Those are the blue. On the upper-left plan at Soldiers Field Place, and then on the bottom-left plan is the upper level at Leo Birmingham Parkway, and sort of a similar strategy of a lot of active uses in the yellow. And then the terrace units, housing units in the blue. Next. And then for landscaping, as I mentioned, it's almost an entirely impervious site as you can see the little circular diagram on the left. And so we are adding a tremendous amount of diversity to the new trees, but also keeping as many of the old trees as possible. And our open space is over 50% of the site. Next.
One of the themes that came out of the neighborhood meetings was the desire for pedestrian connection from Soldiers Field Place up to Leo Birmingham Parkway. As Tamara said, that Leo Birmingham is being reduced by 50% and the DCR is rebuilding the entire pedestrian infrastructure in front of the site. So we are going to be investing in this pathway through the woods. If you look bottom-left, there's a, Copley Wolfens designed a sort of a trail system down wooden, a boardwalk down through the woods connecting the neighbors down at Soldiers Field Place up to the intersection which leads over to the T.
And we also worked with the BCDC to make sure that there were some pausing spots along that roof route for folks who are in wheelchairs and need to take a rest. Next. And of course, there's all the sort of bells and whistles of our sustainable design policy of the city, including passive house and solar panels on the roof. Next.
This is our last slide. So again, good, 333 units, which generates 52 affordable units, a large block of affordability. We have the pedestrian connection from the upper level to the lower level. We think it's a very nice design in keeping with the wooded area of the site, protecting the existing trees and the passive house construction. And we thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Sorry. Thank you. Are there questions from the board? Hearing none, may we have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office can defer to the judgment of this board. Some background information, the community process. This went through a Boston planning-led community process involving both public meetings and IG meetings as well. The applicant also met, as you heard, with Brighton-Austin Improvement Association and the Austin Civic Association, securing support from both groups. With that, we defer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. More?
Hi, Ms. Martin. I'm also writing to the Council of Liz Brayden's office. The Council would like to go on record and support this project. He thinks the project is great and appreciates that this is an appropriate location for some density. She appreciates the inclusion of over 50 IDP units and also appreciates that the project proponent will be constructing the mentioned boardwalk that will help connect this new neighborhood to the rest of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Graham?
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good morning. I'm, yep, thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Daniel Polanco here, project manager at the planning department. I just want to go on record and say that the project did go through our planning department process. It got board approval in April 10 of 2025. I'd like to go on record and say that also we went through the urban design process and the project, you know, did a lot of good work with our internal review team, so thank you.
Thank you. Annabella? Okay, Annabella, you're all set?
Yes. We have no additional requests at the moment.
Okay. With that, are you trying to speak, Annabella? Okay. With that, may I have a motion?
Motion of approval.
Got a second?
Back there.
Mr. Stunbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Eakin?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, may I have a motion?
That's where we're going, yes.
Okay.
So once again, we will ask about case BOA 1701440 with the address of 15 Richard Hill Road. The applicant and/or their representative are present. Would they please explain to the board?
Yes, we will. We'll call around the time for this case with 15 Richard Hill. We'll raise your hand if you're down. Send the, send it to the man.
Okay. Can I have a motion to defer?
Sure. Motion, motion for denial without prejudice.
Oh, that's right, too. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stunbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Eakin?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
With that, people, those who need, propose, or have asked, if there are any requests for withdrawals or deferrals from the 11:30 a.m. cases. And if there are no requests for withdrawals or deferrals from the 11:30 a.m. cases, we'll begin with the 11 o'clock. The 11 o'clock cases. And again, we'll ask if there are any withdrawals or deferrals from the 11 o'clock a.m. cases. Hearing none, we'll begin with case BOA 1708560 with the address of 123 Newbury Street. The applicant and/or their representative are present. Would they please explain the case to the board?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dennis Quilty, attorney of Dermot Quilty, Miller &amp; Hanley, representing the property owner UMNV 123 Newbury LLC and their proposed tenant, Venki Gelato. This is an application for a change of use to allow a ground-floor café at this presently vacant space on Newbury Street for the purpose of their gelato, ice cream, and chocolate business at this site. This is an international concern known around the world for its gelato and ice cream products. With me today, Marco Sandona, who's the head of retail construction and maintenance worldwide. We have, in preparation for coming before you today, met with the Neighborhood Association of the Back Bay on May 5. They gave a letter of non-opposition. As a result of that, ONS required us only to flyer the immediate area, which we did to their satisfaction. This is a use similar to many other uses taking place on Newbury Street on the ground-floor café levels. We hope and think that this will be an amenity to be enjoyed by the neighborhood, and we are certainly happy to take any of your questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Okay, I believe there's a comment from the Disabilities Commission. There should be at least one wheelchair accessible table for the seating area. If the rear entrance is the accessible entrance, there should be a clear signage at the front entrance that indicates the location of the accessible entrance.
We have no issues with that, Madam Chair.
Thank you. With that, may we have public testimony?
Madam Chair and board members, C. Johnson with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This petitioner completed the ONS community process. Our office oversaw distribution of an informational flyer to each Abutter within a 300-foot radius, which solicited no comments to our office. The Neighborhood Association of the Back Bay is in non-opposition to this application. With that background, we defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Motion of approval.
Got a second?
Second. Second. Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Ms. Wu-woh?
Yes.
Mr. Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Ekin?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, we have, I believe, the two companion cases. First being case BOA 1719422 with the address of 316 to 318 Northern Avenue. Along with that, we have case BOA 1719413 with the address of 331 to 339 Northern Avenue. Here are two different applicants listed, but we'll ask if the, if there is one or two applicants and/or their representative, who will explain these cases to the board?
Good morning. J.I., Attorney, representing both applicants. They're different LLCs, but the controlling developer is related Neil. With me today is Joe Mamiak of SGA, the architect, and project managers Dan Baxter of Vertex and Aaron Champagne of Consigli. We only have a few slides. This first slide shows the full extent of the proposed construction, which is a bridge connecting two buildings that have already been before this board. If we could go to the next slide, please, I can orient you. This is in the Raymond L. Flynn Marine Industrial Park. The two buildings are shown in blue on either side of Northern Avenue. The Northerly Building, we came before you in 2019 for zoning relief, and the Southerly Building, we were before you two years ago. The Northerly Building is up and running and occupied by Vertex already. The Southerly Building is under construction. All of the framing is up. Vertex will be occupying both buildings. And that's why we're here, is to come back a third time, to amend the zoning relief for each building to account for this bridge. The bridge will be weather protected, efficient, safe passageway for laboratory staff to go back and forth. There are other bridges like this in Boston, but they do present zoning problems because the street, Northern Avenue, is under the jurisdiction of the Public Improvement Commission. We've been to the Public Improvement Commission. They have approved the bridge and Joe's going to show you the clearance and the dimensions. It's more than 30 feet up in the air. But technically, Marine Industrial Park is still one lot. So when we got the first building approved, it was approved as part of an enormous single lot controlled by EDIC, the city owns the park. But when we came back two years ago, we were instructed to get the zoning relief for the Southerly Building as if it were its own lot. Long story short, the papers give you all of the details and I won't bore the board with it, but we do need an amendment to each of the approvals. Essentially, a variance is required. If you look at each of these buildings as sitting on their own lot, then the FAR is already over 2.0. This is old 1960 zoning. It's an old industrial zone. There will only be 275 square feet added to the Northerly site and 143 square feet added to the Southerly site, but that's still more than zero and therefore there has to be an amendment. Respectfully, we think we can meet the findings and that's in the papers, too, for appearance. With that, I want to turn it over to Joe Mamiak and I'll turn my microphone off. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Joe Mamiak. I'm with SGA and I will explain a little bit more about the bridge and maybe what we do is go to the next slide. Here you'll see a little bit more detail. In the upper right-hand corner is a vicinity map that shows the two buildings. Lighting Center 1 is on the right-hand side. It's already existing and occupied by Vertex. The building on the left-hand side is Lighting Center 2, which is under construction, as Jared has mentioned, and the bridge is connecting both of them to advance science. That's the reason for the bridge itself. We blew up that portion of it so you can see that selected view down below. A little bit larger. Down below are the planned dimensions, 72 and 1/4, 22 feet and 1/4 inch is the right-of-way, which includes Northern Avenue, which is shown, you know, with the vertical lines on the sheet. On the flanking sides are the dimensions of the bridge that actually span, you know, within the property zone, area of the associated building itself. So it comes out, if you add those numbers, those come close to 100 feet span, which again connects the third level of each building. Up above are dimensions, a point of reference from, you know, down below at grade to the top of bridge. So there's a series of dimensions right in there that run across the top. And down underneath it are vertical dimensions from grade to the underside of the bridge itself. And the fact that it changes, you'll see that in the perspectives that I'm going to share on the next slide. Let's go to the next image. Here you can see, again, the bridge connects the third level of both buildings. There's been really attentive details in terms of the way the structure is expressed within the bridge itself. The elegance of this bridge as it's wrapped by glass on three sides, the two sides, the elevations, including the roof itself, to allow for a nice transparency and a sense of lightness. And down below, we shaped the bridge, so there is, you know, different dimensions underneath it. Great interest for the bridge itself from views from the public realm. Let's go to the next view. Just, this is a little bit more of a detail here. This is connect, the bridge connected into the existing building Lighting Center 1, which never originally had a bridge in mind, but there was careful focus on minimizing the intervention, you know, to that skin itself. It looks as if it was meant to be there. And also, we wanted to minimize any structural interventions with, you know, within the building itself. Next one, please. And there are a lot of studies that we have done, you know, with daylight. Certainly, one of the more important ones is equally, I should say, equally important is dusk and nighttime sense of the bridge itself and its presence. Real focus on LED lighting done in such a way that the luminars are not seen. That is intentional here. And to really give a sense of lightness and focus on the structural elegance of the bridge itself. We find that this bridge itself is a great feature in the fact that it does connect the two buildings and maintains a wonderful value in terms of advancing science, but also it becomes a wonderful threshold and iconic moment within the Marine Industrial Park. So with that, I'll conclude the presentation there and we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board? Hearing none. Public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office can defer to the judgment of this board. This went through a BPA-led process. Run away from any concerns presently. With that, we defer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Looks like we have more than a second. Okay, with that, may I have?
Hi, I'm sorry. I would like to speak, um, sorry, from Council of Flynn's office. I just had a phone call. I'm sorry, guys. Thank you. Um, I'm going to read, um, his statement right now. Council of Flynn would like to go on record in support of Vertex pedestrian, pedestrian pitch proposal based on a good community process and work with neighbors in the South Boston waterfront and the Raymond L. Flynn Marine Industrial Park. During this uncertain time, Council of Flynn believes it is especially critical that we focus on the long-term economic vitality of Boston by continuing to show support for our longtime major employers, including those in the life science, biotechnology, and research industry. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Ms. Wu-woh?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Ekin?
Yes.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have another article, lady case. This is case BOA 1727765 with the address of 3458 Washington Street. I believe the app represented, the attorney Moranci, you will play the conclusion to the board.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Stembridge. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Moranci. I'm an attorney with the business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. I represent Boston Pinnacle Properties and its principal, Adam Burns. Architectural services for the project are being provided by Balance Architects and Philip Seema, principal of Balance. And the project architect is here today and will present the architectural plans once they've concluded. Our client seeks to demolish the existing commercial structure located at 3458 Washington Street in Jamaica Plain and construct a new five-story mixed-use building to include 36 residential rental units, including eight IDP units and one ground floor commercial unit of approximately 754 square feet. The project will bring numerous improvements to the public realm beyond merely the replacement of an auto-related use with new housing. There will be enhanced streetscapes achieved by the introduction of new wider sidewalks and six new street trees, new ADA compliant pedestrian ramps, and the closure of unnecessary curb cuts. The new building will have exterior parking at grade for seven motor vehicles, including one developer provided shared electric car for use by building residents. There will also be an interior bicycle storage room with space for 30 bicycles and an exterior sheltered bicycle storage area for seven bicycles, including one developer provided shared electric cargo bike. Unit mix will consist of 19 studio units, 10 one-bedroom units, four two-bedroom units, and three three-bedroom units. Two of the units will be group 2A accessible units in accordance with the requirements of 521 CMR Section 9. The project's site is just over 10,000 square feet in size and is currently occupied by a single-story automobile service and repair facility with service commercial parking. While the current zoning for the site is LI, local industrial, the proposed project is located within the boundaries of Plan JP Rocks adopted in 2017 by the city in order to stimulate both market rate and affordable housing creation in the neighborhoods east of the orange line between Jackson Square, Aggleston Square, and Forest Hills, and including Jamaica Plain's Washington Street corridor. Under the provisions of local industrial zoning, the permit application was refused owing to the need for a number of variances in conditional use permits. Proposed multifamily residential use is forbidden in LI sub-district and requires variance. And the same is true for the proposed accessory residential parking, which is also forbidden owing to the fact that the underlying residential use is forbidden. The zoning refusal letter cites local retail as a conditional use, but this is incorrect as a local retail business is in allowed use under Article 55's LI zoning. Similarly, the refusal letter citation of accessory parking for retail business being conditional is also erroneous. However, that point is moot since the project does not include any parking for the commercial unit. The proposed floor area ratio of approximately 3.08 requires relief because it exceeds the maximum FAR of one allowed by zoning in the LI sub-district and the proposed 55 feet of building height exceeds the 35 feet allowed by zoning. Both of these excesses are, however, within the allowed limits under Plan JP Rocks and are consistent with other ongoing development projects located nearby. A variance is required from usable open space requirements as 50 square feet per dwelling unit is required, while the project provides approximately 35 square feet. As will be seen when Phil Seema takes the board through the plans, all units of the two benefit from private balconies and the site as a whole benefits from its close proximity to numerous public open spaces, including most significantly Franklin Park, which is about an eight-minute walk away. Finally, variance is required for insufficient off-street parking and loading. Here, it should be noted that the project's site is located along a major transit corridor, thus supporting the city's goals for sustainable transit-accessible housing. Site is located about 12 minutes walking distance to Forest Hills Orange Line T Station and less than 10 minutes from Green Street Station. All of the project's use in dimensional metrics, while requiring relief from the underlying zoning, are fully compliant with the requirements and allowances of Plan JP Rocks and thus fully comply with the city's general planning priorities. And more significantly, this replacement of an auto-repair facility with mixed-use residential development aligns with provision of Plan JP Rocks to create more housing opportunities along the Washington Street corridor. With respect to project affordability, there will be, as I said, eight IDP units, consisting of three studio units, three one-bedroom units, one two-bedroom unit, and one three-bedroom unit. Five of the IDP units will be offered at 70% AMI and three will be offered at 30% AMI. The two-bedroom IDP unit will be a group 2A accessible unit. With that, Madam Chair, I'll pause. If there are no questions on anything that I just related, I would propose that the presentation be turned over to Philip Seema, who can walk the board through the plans.
Briefly, any questions from the board so far? Okay, please proceed.
Morning, everyone. Philip Seema from Balance Architects. If you can move to the next or the first slide yet. So this is our project. This is a rendering looking at the corner of Washington and Kenton Road, where it's a mixed-use, as George said, with ground floor retail. Well, that's what you're seeing on that left bottom corner. On all the public facades, we're using masonry materials, a mix of charcoal-colored bricks, red bricks on that facade. And then if you go to the next slide, as we get into the residential size along Kenton, we transition the materials to kind of more typical fiber cement platform siding. And if you go down to the next rendering, it shows kind of that transition. So the bottom line rendering is looking directly to residential butter, which we've done extensive work trying to figure out, you know, how to kind of merge these two building styles as well as the transition of landscape between these two properties. You move on to the next slide. That's just an existing plot plan. We can continue going. These are more kind of FAR compliance, but as George mentioned, fully compliance with Plan JP Rocks. You can move to the next slide. So, and next slide after this. This is the architectural site plan, so limited parking that's entered on Kenton Road, but there will be a shared EV for all the building residents. We have, again, yeah, there you can clearly see the commercial entry for that retail space on the corner, one-to-one bike parking for the building, a couple ground floor amenities for the residents of the building, as well as two residential units are located on the ground floor. And there's a large masonry screen wall of the parking area between the butters. Next slide, please. These are more life safety and accessibility. You can keep going. In terms of views, we've kind of worked to make sure that all mechanical units will be screened from the, from any public right-of-way or from direct butters. And there's no public roof decks or any access other than just for maintenance and chemicals, but all, almost all roof deck or units in the project do have their own balconies from, access from the units. Go to the next slide, please. Basic shadow studies. The orientation of the building allows for shadows predominantly on Kenton and Washington and not really on any abutting structures. If you go to the next slide, you can keep moving. This is outdoor space calculation. So for landscape, we are introducing new street trees along Washington Street and Kenton Road, as well as short-term bike parking, really enlarging the sidewalk there and integrating permeable pavers. That's what you're seeing in the kind of purple color over here, as well as extensive planting on the side, both the side yards that are kind of being coordinated to direct butters. Go to the next slide. Just a list of some of the species, native species, some columnar species to kind of work with that urban landscape. If you keep going. We looked at the ground floor. You can go to the next floor. So just a typical unit layout. Many of the floors stacked, but three bedroom units, what you're seeing on the bottom left-hand side, two bedroom units on the front, and then a mix of studio and one bedrooms. So that's pretty So that's pretty much an overview of the project, and I think George captured much of it, but I can open it up to the board.
Questions from the board? Here, and now Madam Chairman, testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Call her Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time the mayor's offered to defer to the judgment of this board to back information in the community process. This went through a BPD. Boston Planning led community process involving multiple public meetings and small project review. They also connected with the Stony Brook Neighborhood Association, receiving their support on February tenth of this year, and then went on to the GPNC Zoning Committee where they received their support on May twenty-first. With that information, we'll defer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we don't have additional hands raised.
Okay. With that, may I have a motion?
Motion up the floor.
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yeah.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Turner.
Yes.
Mr. Aiken.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. With that, let's take a fifteen-minute break.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Stambridge.
Present, Madam Chair.
As we well.
Present.
Mr. Langham.
Present.
Ms. Turner.
Present.
Mr. Aiken.
Yes.
Great, so just a reminder, we are a six-member board, the floor is yours, Mr. Stambridge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We'll return to the 11:00 clock cases. In this case, we'll do it out. Next case is case BOA 1721184 with the address of Seven Westminster Terrace. This is a planning department at Mayor's Office of Policy and Case. If the applicant can vote their representative as president, if they please explain to the board.
Yes, we are. Good afternoon, members of the board. My name is Rebecca Lee, I'm a partner at Mintz with an address at One Financial Center in Boston. I'm here on behalf of a collaboration of Roxbury Stonehouse and Planning Office for Urban Affairs, both of which are nonprofit organizations well experienced in creating affordable housing. This is an affordable housing project to be developed on vacant Boston Redevelopment Authority-owned land, one of the last remaining parcels of the Washington Street Urban Renewal area. This is going to be an approximately 9200 square foot structure to contain 13 units of a mixture of apartments, emergency shelter, and transitional housing. It's a very tight site, it's on a private way cul-de-sac, and as a result requires not only a conditional use permit for the emergency shelter portion of the property, but also dimensional variances. There, we have a presentation, I have with me Michelle Widler from, I'm not sure what's scrolling. Looks like the ISD turndown letter. But Michelle Widler from the architectural team to present the project, designing to you.
Good afternoon, board members. I'm Michelle Widler with TAT, which is the architect for the project. I think maybe we have, if you go a little further, we should have some images there. Oh, perfect, thanks. And if you want to, here's a site plan here, and as Attorney Lee mentioned, it is a very tight site. And we are proposing a three-story building comprised of a total of 13 units, which is made up of studios and two bedroom units. And that will create about 9200 square feet of residential space. And the dimensional variance we are seeking today are for floor area ratio with required of 1.0. We are at 1.57. Usable open space, what would be required here is 2600 square feet, and we are looking at 2080 square feet, so a little below the required front yard setback. Required, of course, is 20 feet, and we are at 11 feet. Rear yard setback is also 20 feet, and we are at 4.6 inches. And side yard setback 10 feet, with we have 8 feet on one side and 9 feet at the other side. Project has gone through quite a few meetings with Planning Office, or with the Boston Planning Department. And, you know, if you can scroll a little bit more if you'd like, here's the rendering of it. And we've really worked to, for the design to be similar in scale and dial to the surrounding buildings, which are also three-story buildings, also with bay windows, or bays. And we've really tried to respect the surrounding character of the project. Scroll a little more, and there'll be some elevations where you can see. Here's the project site right there, architectural site plan. Scroll a little further. The first floor is comprised of five affordable units. And floors two and three comprise of units for emergency shelter housing. I think we're all with any other questions?
Just want to add that these are going to be units that will be permanently restricted as affordable housing, and therefore no parking is required here. This is within the context of a heavily residential neighborhood. And more importantly, right behind it is a facility owned by Stonehouse at One Westminster Avenue, which means that folks in this facility will be able to access job training, social services, and other services at the Roxbury Stonehouse facility. There will be a pedestrian connection between this property and the Roxbury Stonehouse-owned property adjacent. And that will enable this to operate as a very efficient extension of their longstanding services, which they've operated for over 30 years. We're happy to answer any questions. Obviously, this project did go through a Butters' meetings, neighborhood meetings with organizations, and they've touched base with elected officials. And there has not been any opposition raised to this project.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office are going record in support of this project. Some background information, the community process. In addition to going through MLH community process, ONS also hosted a Butters' meeting on June 9th. There was only one Butter in attendance at that meeting, who just expressed concern for the number of halfway houses in the neighborhood, which they feel was excessive. We did receive one other call from a resident also expressing similar sentiments in opposition. However, the applicants went before the Eggleston Square Neighborhood Association, the Garrison Trotter Neighborhood Association, and secured their support. The Mayor's Office believes that if approved, this will provide critical housing to a population that is very much in need, and this will be a boon for the neighborhood. With that information, we'll defer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
The number is 9316, if you can speak, please.
Ms. Mora, are you speaking in support or opposition of this project?
Hi Paula, we tried to unmute you. Call us 617759. Okay, there you go. You can speak. Are you looking to give testimony here? Because we can't hear you. For some reason, we can't hear them. I'm not sure what to do. Um, no additional reasons outside the gathering.
Okay, with that, may I have a motion? Quick, I do see a raise can. Is it the same raise can you were trying?
Try it again. Paula, we sent a request to unmute you. Once you unmute yourself, you could speak. We were having a hard time hearing you. Can you hear, can anyone hear me?
Oh, we can hear you now.
Okay, um, this is characters. I live on 20th Street. And, um, I would say on, we agreed on Westminster to see the setting house.
That's a little hard to hear you, I don't know.
I'm going to go, I'm sorry, this might better. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, so we went to actually see the site, because we weren't sure, could hear it. And when we arrived, what we found was a very small. And in the letter that I wrote to you, I kind of re-submitted the violations that had already been provided about the property. And our main concern is that it appears as Roxbury, every square foot that can be used for housing is used. And we deserve, just like everybody else. We did not get no indication of the Butters' meeting, because we were one block over. And maybe the Butters' policy needs to be expanded, because we're all interested in that size.
So ma'am, then can you wrap up? Are you in support or in opposition of the project?
Oh, I wrote that because of the size of the building and the size of the wall.
Okay, thank you, noted.
Thank you.
Not sure if the applicant wishes to respond? If not, okay.
I don't, I don't think so.
Okay, great. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Can you put the proviso about a housing agreement issued prior to issuing permits?
Yes, we can do that, Madam Chair.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stambridge?
Yes.
As we well?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
I have a question of clarification. Could you just explain the proviso about the housing agreement you just referred to?
That is from the Planning Department, as part of Planning Department's recommendation. So if they would like to speak to it, they can. Is there someone from Planning on?
Yes, there's Sarah Maselli from the Planning Department. Because the project exceeds the minimum threshold for, you know, inclusionary zoning and as well is set to provide, you know, income-restricted units, our real estate department does not yet have record of a housing agreement to ensure or confirm those income-restricted units. And so this proviso was added to ensure that, you know, that status was confirmed with our real estate department and legal team.
Thank you. All right. Next case?
Next, we have two companion cases. First is case BOA 1677952 with the address of 95 Business Street. Along with that, we have case BOA 1677948 with the address of 95A Business Street. The applicant can vote their representative or president, if they please, explain to the board.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is John Lyons, I'm an attorney with an office at 80 Copeland Street in Quincy, Massachusetts. With me is Jennifer Ha from Hugh Architecture and the owner, Ruthman Parisien. And Mr. Parisien is an owner-occupant, he purchased this property in August of 2002. He's lived there with his family, and he intends to continue to reside at the location. The purpose of this application is to reconfigure an existing one-family dwelling in a two-family 5,000-square-foot zone, so the use is as of right. Most of the violations are due to the fact that this house, which was constructed over 100 years ago, has dimensional violations which are fairly typical in this neighborhood, as they are in many neighborhoods throughout the city. The, I won't get into the details of the violations, I think it's better if Jennifer covers that as she explains the plan. I will just say to you that I think that this project is an enhancement to this neighborhood. It is a residential neighborhood, a very nice residential neighborhood, primarily owner-occupied, that spreads over multiple blocks in Hyde Park, including 2F5000, 1F6000, and a small three-family zone, which happens to directly abut an industrial zone, which is fairly typical in Hyde Park, where an opponent's river crosses River Street and Business Street intersects. So directly across the street is industrial, actually in fairly decent condition, interesting buildings. But directly adjacent to or behind this building is other residential properties. So the enhancement of this property will actually serve as a nice gateway into that residential neighborhood. The hardship which we have is primarily due to, again, the age of the structure and its location, which we can't change. And also, the shape of the lot is essentially a trapezoid. So it narrows from the end where the garage is proposed to be constructed. We place an existing garage. The new garage will be a much better-looking structure, as you will see when Jennifer presents. And the way the plan has been designed, the building sort of flows into the open space between the garage and the resident. It's a very nice project, if I may say so, and I think you will agree once you see the plan. The justification for this requested zoning relief, again, there's a hardship caused by the shape of the lot and the reasonable use of the land requires a fairly substantial investment. But again, the two-family use is allowed in this district. I know that zoning is not a popularity contest, but we had in a Butters' meeting, there was no opposition. Over 30 signatures in support within the 300-foot zone were submitted to the board. And we presented to the Factory Hill Civic Association. There were some questions asked, and I believe they were satisfactorily answered, and there was no opposition there. There is also a letter of support in the file from that association. So with that, I will hand it off to Jennifer, and if any questions remain after her presentation, I'll be happy to answer. Thank you.
Hello, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Jennifer Ha, principal architect of Hugh Architecture in Dorchester. I'll be presenting the proposed design. Can we start on page one, please? Thank you. There's an existing single-family on the Y-trapezoidal shape, and that's where the owner and the family currently lives. The lot is 5,608 square feet, measures approximately 96 feet wide and 58 feet deep. To accommodate their expanding family, the family wishes to convert the 1,680 square-foot single-family into a 3,252 square feet two-family, as well as add a detached two-car garage. Page two, please. The lot is a 2F5000 zone, and immediately abuts the local industrial district. So directly in front, you will see the Harrison refrigeration appliance, as well as other commercial tenants. And then the houses on this block, like what John had said, is comprised mostly of single families and two families, so we feel the two-family is, fits well in this context. Page three, please. The top existing site plan shows what the existing boundaries of the dwelling is. As you can see on the proposed, the colored site plan, on the northeast corner is where we have filled in that gap in that corner. And then the southwest corner towards the big green lawn, we have added a small addition. So in terms of the changes of the footprint, it is rather minor to what is there originally. There is a garage on the southwest side of the lot, which we are adding away from the home to preserve the existing green lawn space, which they are using. And the variances we are seeking for, briefly, the FAR proposed is 0.53, but requires 0.5. The building height proposes three stories and under 35 feet. We are required at two and a half stories under 35 feet. Usable open space proposed is 1,566 per unit. We're required 1,750 square feet per unit. The side yard proposed is 2.4 feet, which is existing non-conforming. The required is 10 feet. Rear yard proposed is 7.6 feet, which is existing non-conforming, and the required is 40 feet. The parking is also just one per unit at the moment, how we designed it, but required is actually two per unit, so we are too short of parking. Page four, please. There is an existing unfinished basement, and the proposal will expand the original basement to the rear. It will still be unfinished and used as storage and mechanical space for the units above. You will see the first floor, unit one is on the first floor, is 1,122 square feet. The unit will host two bedrooms and two bathrooms, open kitchen, dining, living. Page five, please. The second floor and attic make up the second floor unit. It is where the owner and his family plans to live. And it is the bigger unit at 2,036 square feet. The unit will host four bedrooms, four bathrooms, and open kitchen dining, plus family room. Page six, please. Here is the, sorry, one second. Okay, so the, we kept the charm of the existing front facade, which is two and a half story gable with hip front porch. And the rear of the original dwelling was actually only one story. And so we extended that kind of front two-and-a-half-story look all the way to the back of the space, to gain more space for the units. We added a small dormer on the east side of the roof, and a larger dormer on the west side of the roof. Next page, please. The detached two-car garage is one and a half story with a pull-down ladder to access an attic storage level. And it's a simple aesthetic with traditional New England style that matches the home. The next page, please. These are existing floor plans of the single-family, which is originally four bedrooms and one and a half bathroom and a large side deck. Next, please. Here you see the existing elevation of the home, as you see the front facade largely retains the style in proportion of what is there currently. And you can see the back is only one story, and we have made that two and a half stories tall. Next, next page, please. So we designed large decks for each unit with great windows and doors facing the large side landscaping, which is where the family likes to congregate. We intend a dual shingle and lap siding detail to offer a more New England neighborhood aesthetic and attractive curb appeal. That's the end of the presentation.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Madam Chair and members of the board, for the record, my name is Jeremy Bembry. I am the Hyde Park Community Engagement Specialist for the Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant has completed the community process, which consisted of an Butters' meeting facilitated on April 1st, with no Butters in attendance. Next, the proposal was presented to Factory Hill Neighborhood Association on May 14th to the board in the support of the proposal. To date, our office has received one letter of support from the Factory Hill Neighborhood Association. Thank you for your time in the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to defer to the board for their judgment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair? Okay, there is one hand raised. The phone number, 3641, if you can speak, please. No. All right. Our hands, additional hands for this project? Okay, one sec, there is one more. No. All right. Our hands, additional hands for this project. Okay, one sec. There is one more. Please. The planning department, go ahead.
Is someone from the planning department?
At the time, hi there. Sorry, I was on mute accidentally. I just want to note that at the time that the planning department reviewed these plans and submitted our ZBA recommendation for the project, the plans, project plans had yet to be stamped and refused by inspectional services. And we would just ask that the board confirm the acceptance and accuracy of these plans at the hearing here. If the refused, accepted and refused set has not been issued by inspectional services to date, planning department would recommend deferral as opposed to the approval recommendation noted on our recommendation.
And that would be a question, I think, for Caroline. Would you be able to clarify that question?
Let me look into it and ask if Stephanie maybe knows about the plan. Let me look into that. You can give me two minutes.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I reviewed the plans. One set does have the ISD stamp, 95A does, 95 does not. However, they appear to be showing much of the same thing submitted.
Okay, well, are you comfortable making a motion?
Let me just... Yes. Let's see. I will make a motion to approve.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
Next, we have case BOA 1694601 with the address of 51 Walnut Street. If the applicant and/or their representative or president, will they please explain case to the board?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Stenbridge. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Thank you for allowing us to speak today regarding 3551 Walnut Street in Hyde Park. My name is Justin Burns. I'm an attorney from Poggenian Norton, L.L.P., and also with me today is Colm Dumphy, the property owner and project proponent. What we are presenting before you today is a relatively straightforward project. Mr. Dumphy currently owns the single-story garage that sits upon 51 Walnut Street. He is proposing to combine that 51 Walnut lot through a separate ALT that has been filed with the abutting 35 Walnut lot, which is currently devoid of any structures and is being used as an outdoor storage space for materials. He then proposes subsequently to raise the existing garage on 51 Walnut, which is currently 800 square feet, the building that is, not the lot, and construct a new single-story garage in its place. This garage will be used and parked to house vehicles for his property management company, along with other materials used by the company. The total square footage of the building will be approximately 3,200 square feet, and the total height will be about 25 feet. Mr. Dumphy has made sure to extensively improve this site after purchasing it from his previous owner. This is clear in the pictures shown below. He has tidied it up significantly. Prior to the building of his garage at 51 Wall Street, the site was in significant disrepair. This project would only further improve the site, both in the visual aspect and from a security standpoint, as Mr. Dumphy plans to install exterior lighting and security cameras. Additionally, if anyone is curious as to the future appearance of the new building, the color scheme and the materials will be identical to the building currently shown on the images on the presentation. The project will serve to be a significant improvement along a street primarily occupied by aging industrial buildings. It will only continue the existing use of the lot. We're not starting any new uses here. It has been in a commercial site, in a garage site, for about 40 years now. The project is simple enough in material and build that it will not significantly hinder any future development of the parcel or the street. I just want to give a brief note on the community process. Our butters meeting was attended by the only direct abutter to the project on Walnut Street, who is in full support and supplied a letter of support. Additionally, the Hyde Park Neighborhood Association zoning committee reviewed the plans and voted not to oppose the project. Boston Planning Department also recommended approval. With that, I am happy to answer any questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board? Hearing none. May I have public testimony?
Madam Chair and members of the board, for the record, my name is Jeremy Bembry. I am the Hyde Park Community Engagement Specialist for the Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant has completed the community process, which consisted of an abutters meeting facilitated on April 9th with one abutter in attendance who voiced support for the proposal. Next, the proponent provided Hyde Park Neighborhood Association with all required documentation of the proposal, who voted to not oppose the proposal or require the proponent to present to the Neighborhood Association. To date, our office has received one letter of support received today and sent to the board. Thank you for your time in the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to defer to the board for their judgment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, no additional comments, please.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Chair. I'd like to comment on this.
Okay.
Good afternoon, everyone. This is Eddie Conley again from Counselor in Ricky Pen's office, District 5 City Counselor. On behalf of the Counselor, just like to express his support for this project and put that on the record. Thank you.
For that, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yep.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have two companion cases. The first is case BOA 1703539 with the address of 20 Claire Avenue. Along with that, we have case BOA 1703489, the address of 22 Claire Avenue. The applicant and/or their representative or president, will they please explain to the board?
Sure. My name is Tim Sheehan. I'm the architect for the project. I'm at 9 Wall Street in Charlestown. Salik Marshall, my client, who lives at 20 Claire Avenue, is on as well, speaking to it. Essentially, what we're doing here is 20 Claire Avenue now is on a 93, 54-square-foot lot. It's a two-family. We'd like to break the parcel up and build another new construction, two-family. Doing, breaking the lot up creates some violations for the existing house, the lot area, lot width, FAR. And then on the new house, we'd have Austria Park and additional lot area, FAR and height violations. But having, you know, having looked at the neighborhood, it's mostly two families. It's a 2F 5,000 zone. We're close on the square footage, and the thought was to sort of mimic the 12-pitch 45 roofs that you see on most of the houses. The new house would consist of two units, a ground floor duplex into the ground floor, first floor, with some excavations and some lockouts at the back. It would be a four-bedroom, three-bath unit at around 2160 square feet. And then the upper unit, unit two, would be around 1470 square feet. It would be three bedrooms plus, there'd be an office on the second floor there, but really three bedrooms and two and a half baths. A new construction again, and we've tried hard to mimic the neighboring architecture. And we had a neighborhood meeting that went... Well, I think maybe the only concern was the person directly behind us at Navarre Street was wondering how close we were. The new building would be about 50 to 55 feet from her house, and we're located northwest of her, so we shouldn't block her light. There are a fair amount of trees at the back of our parcel between us and the Navarre Street property, which we won't touch. And having said that, I think the last thing is there's a parking violation. The site now has a tandem driveway on it for two spots, so we're just building around that. We're going to leave that. But it does create a violation for us because two cars are required per unit, which would be four cars, but we're trying to keep the green space to a maximum, and that's the project.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board? Hearing none. May I have public testimony?
Madam Chair and members of the board, for the record, my name is Jeremy Bembry. I am the Rosendale Community Engagement Specialist for the Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant has completed the community process, which consisted of an abutters meeting facilitated on May 13th, where abutters made inquiries that were addressed during the meeting with a concern for property lines, green space, and the effect on the view. Concluding the abutters meeting, no further community process was required, and the proposal was approved to move forward. To date, our office has received one letter in opposition to the size of the proposal and one letter of concern for loss of light, traffic, and parking congestion, as well as density. Thank you for your time in the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to defer to the board for their judgment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Shaw?
Yeah. Hi, I'm chairman and board members. Thank you for giving me the chance. I'm the owner of the... My property is next to this property, so we are the ones, my wife, Longjun, and I are the one who sent a letter about the concern. It's so close. The lot is not that big, so when they build a house, that will block the nights to our house, and also it's so close, impact our privacy and also the airflow. So that's our concern. A lot of why it's traffic and parking. It's a pretty busy street, and sometimes it's harder for me to find a parking spot. If a new two-family house is built, the parking will be a pretty significant issue. And also the infrastructure stress, because like I said, it's a narrow street. When two sides both park the cars, almost like you can only go one, like can only accommodate one car. So a lot of time, people need to shift. It's a narrow street. So that will build some strains on the local safety concerns and the local services. So that's another one. This is, those three points are the ones we sent. But in addition, I have other two points. One is I talk to my labor. I try to collect some information from labor. So far, I only find the one labor I talk to, which is Barry Edwards. His house is next to me, so two houses from the property. He is clearly and strongly against this proposal. And another thing is, I think... I lose point. What's the next point I have?
Well, if you can wrap up.
I'll stop here. Sorry.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Sheehan?
Yeah, I just think what we're building fits with the neighborhood. You know, a 50-foot lot by 90 feet deep, two families, that's what's on that street, the majority of the houses. The parking, you know, I don't live there. I can't... I mean, every time I went there, this parking was, seemed pretty easy to me, but I live in Charlestown, so, you know, it's a lot harder up this part of the city. But, you know, we worked pretty hard to scale it to the neighboring houses, and I, you know, I think it's going to be, it'll be a net positive effect to that neighborhood to fill in that empty parcel.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? For that, may I have a motion? We're not doing rebuttals back and forth. Thank you. Any... A motion from the board?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yep.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1703702 with the address of 14 Barnes Street. If the applicant and/or their representative were present, will they please explain case to the board?
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Kyle Smith of Statera Law, the business address of 359 Newbury Street in Boston's Back Bay. I also have the proponent and owner of the parcel on the phone with us, who's a current, been a, the current owner and operator of the structure with an expanding family. We believe we have a pretty benign proposal and request for you, which is a singular request for an FAR variance to allow the owner to expand livable square footage into the current unfinished attic area pursuant to the plans here. The sole requested zoning relief sought is just for FAR. We're looking to increase the internal livable square footage by 400 square feet, taking a currently non-conforming FAR of .875 to an increased 1.046. This lies in the Jamaica Plain area for the city. We've gone through the entire community process, including the JPNC, and have their vote of approval. But I'll let, obviously, Mr. Bembry confirm that on behalf of the Mayor's Office. And with that, we are happy to turn it over to the board for questions.
Questions from the board? Hearing none. May I have public testimony?
Madam Chair and members of the board, for the record, my name is Jeremy Bembry. I am the Jamaica Plain Community Engagement Specialist for the Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant has completed the community process, which consisted of an abutters meeting facilitated on May 7th, with only one abutter in attendance. Increases were made and addressed during the meeting, such as the construction timeframe and how materials will be moved. Next, the proponent was presented to, the proposal was presented to JPNC, Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council on May 21st, when they voted to approve the proposal. Thank you for your time in the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to defer to the board for their judgment.
Madam Chair, no additional comments, please.
Thank you. For that, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yep.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you, family.
Next, we have case BOA 171965A with the address of 19 Sherbrooke Street. The applicant and/or their representative were present. Will they please explain to
Do you have a ring stand here? Kevin, someone requests to make you a familyist. Once you become a familyist, you can then meet yourself.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Kevin Fitzomans. I'm the owner of 19 Sherbrooke Street in West Roxbury, Mass, along with our builder, Charlie Sheehan, who is available for questions after. I believe the best pages for representation are on pages three, four, and 15. Our project consists of removing our existing dormer and installing a new New England-style dormer. Some of our variances are pre-existing non-conforming, such as our side yard and front yard. Both will not be affected by our project. In this project, we're adding approximately 180 square feet of livable space. With the space, we'll be adding one and a half bathrooms, along with more living space for our second and first floor. We have completed the full community process, and with that, I'll leave questions for the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board? Hearing none. May I have public testimony?
Madam Chair and board members, Siggy Johnson with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This petitioner completed the ONS community process. Our office oversaw distribution of an informational flyer to each abutter within a 300-foot radius, and the flyering solicited no comments to our office. West Roxbury Neighborhood Council is in support of this application. With that background, we defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, no additional comments.
Is that may I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do you want to add designer view?
Yeah. Yes, now, yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Next, we have case BOA 1708487 with the address of 45 Morgans. Next, we have case BOA 1708487 with the address of 45 Morgan Street. If the applicant and/or their representative were present, would they please explain the case to the board?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair and Board Members. I appreciate your time today. My name is Greg Lewis. I'm the owner and occupant of 45 Oriole Street. The proposal is to build a garage with a suite above, that's for occasional use by in-laws and eventually, I assume, anyway, children returning from college that's many years out. That's the front-facing property, that's the proposed garage. So, the garage would go sort of in the, where the driveway is today. But that's the proposed design of the, of the project. Again, this project, my neighborhood and abudders in particular have been remarkably supportive. The impact, the neighbor impacted most is that to the left of my property, as you look at it, for whatever reason, the interior layer of their home results in limited viewing of our property, oddly enough, so they have no opposition to the project. There was a garage, a two-car garage on the property years before it was renovated. That was about 10, 12 years ago. So, the current proposed garage would sort of fit in that footprint for the most part. You know, that's not the scale, obviously, but that's sort of the placement of the garage and the eventual look of the property. So, with that, I think I'll, I'll leave it there. I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Madam Chair and Board Members, Siggy Johnson with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This petitioner completed the ONS community process. Our office hosted an abudders meeting on May 12th, at which no concerns were raised. The West Roxbury Neighborhood Council is in support of this application. With that background, we defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, no additional comments for this project.
Would that may have a motion?
Oh shit, sorry.
Motion to approve.
One second, Jay Walsh, I think. Jay Walsh, you want to speak on this case?
Uh, yeah, my apologies, it's the second time today I was late to the drop. But Jay Walsh, I'm at 15 Gilmore Terrace. I'm actually a neighbor of Mr. Lewis's and like to go on record in support of the project. And the neighborhood is always a much better place when Greg's parents and his in-laws are in the community, so any chance that they can get to spend more time here is a welcome addition. Thank you.
Thank you. Would that may have a motion?
Motion to approve.
A second?
Second.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes, Mayor.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Eakin?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Great, thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1695772 with the address of 7 Tip Top Street. If the applicant and/or their representative were present, would they please explain to the board?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm Don Reese with the Boston firm of D. Torby. We are at 175 Federal Street in the Financial District. With me is the property owner, Prasanna Lachigari. This project comes before the board through something of a wandering path. When Prasanna bought this building, it was a two-family. It had need of major systems and cosmetic upgrades. She began to renovate the property. She ended up with a lovely family as her second-floor tenant. She was renovating the first floor, she did it for herself. And she was all of a few days away from getting her CBO when a fire broke out in the property. As it happens, a teenage girl who lived nearby woke up on weekend morning, saw some, what seemed to be some unusual brightness out of her window, called her grandmother. They figured out it was, it was a fire in the building. Fortunately, both Prasanna and the tenants were away that weekend when the fire department came. And there was extensive damage to the building that completely destroyed the interior. Extender, see, had brass. What you see right now is some of the, what had been new cabinetry inside the building. Extensive demolition. And so, because of the extent of the damage, because so much of the building had to be rebuilt, Prasanna has changed her vision of the future of this building from the two-family that she planned occupying as the classic resident owner with a, with a tenant in the building. She is doing substantial work to the attic rafters, among other major structural proposals of the building. And so, she is proposing to change the building to a four-family occupancy. As you can see, if you don't mind going back a couple of slides. Hold on, thank you, that's perfect. While the building has been significantly damaged internally, she is largely keeping the exterior lines of the building. She is updating and freshening a bit, ending up with a soft, modern quality of the building, which extends, well, the expectable blend in very nicely. On the procedural side, she's done extensive outreach. After our abudders meeting, we went to two VAI meetings. No members of the community attended either VAI meeting. Prasanna has submitted an initial round of 49 players of support. She received 11 more light break, and she's been out of town, she has family overseas, she just got back in the, to town, received 11 more support letters. So, she's turned in a total of 60. This is low tech, this is late break, you know, folks can see this, yeah, this may not be in focus. Let's see. Let's see if that comes to the focus. Anyway, she, she has extensive support on all the surrounding blocks. Again, we have 60 levels of support. To address the zoning violations, the most significant one, obviously, is changing the historic two-family, two and four-family unit. There is no space on the lot to add parking. And in addition, she's increasing the FAR. The FAR was already not conforming, was close to 1.0. She'll be increasing that to 1.76. She is not enlarging the perimeter of the building. The FAR increases are converting in for herself in the basement and creating knee walls at the upper levels of the building, so the attic can be inhabited and has adequate ceiling height for occupancy at that level. We could go forward to the next image, please. This is a rear elevation. This, these units are set up to have master suites that have en-suite baths, lovely rocking closets, and private exterior space for both master units on the second and third floor level. You can see at the first floor level, what had been enclosed porch initially, though, which was fire damage, or I shouldn't say enclosed porch, an outdoor porch, has been replaced by exterior space and an overhang for the upper levels. Next slide, please. I've already briefly addressed the zoning. Next slide, please. This building has large floor plates, and we should address one of the concerns that we heard during the community process. A question has come up about whether this building is intended to be student housing. Because the floor plans are large, the floor plates are large. These are three units. This is a four-unit building with three bedroom units on the first, second, and third floor. The, the upper levels have home offices as well. Prasanna's goal is to obtain additional family tenants like she had previously. There's a lot of work out the home happening these days, and so her thought is that these are generous units that should be very attractive to tenants. Obviously, Tip Top Street is just outside of Oak Square. It's walk, lots of urban amenities, the great bus connections to Key Bridge, to the Financial District, to Back Bay, to Water Town, to groceries, things like that. So, it makes a very appealing area for families. And as the plans, floor plans will reveal, these are generous common areas in these spaces, large living areas, big elegant kitchens. These should be wonderful units for families looking to live in Oak Square. Next slide, please. Here you see the second and third floor levels, fairly similar floor plates all the way through the building. Next slide, please. This is a front and side elevation. Again, you can see the original lines of the building have been largely retained, although freshened up and modernized gently. Next slide, please. Rear and the other side elevation. Next slide, please. This is a view of the backyard. As I mentioned previously, what had been a rear porch has been taken off the building. It was also fire damage. That space has been continued upwards in vertical volume. The goal here is to make an attractive backyard for the ground floor tenant. Next slide, please. This is the third floor unit. Again, because the property owner had, has to extensively recreate the attic rafters, will also have to beef them up to meet modern code, there's potential here for a really lovely upper unit with soaring ceilings, very airy, very white-filled. Maybe a little scene in the image here, they're terrific views out over the neighborhood. Tip Top Street really is appropriately named, it's a high street, and this particular unit will just have lovely views with a front deck out of the entire neighborhood. So, Prasanna is especially proud of the design for making use of this reconstructed attic space. Next slide, please. This is another view from inside the third floor unit, again showing the soaring ceilings at that level. Next slide, please. This is the outdoor deck that will overlook the neighborhood below. This is a view showing that the basement unit will have nice window height and will be highly livable. Prasanna is a single professional living in Boston. She doesn't have a car, she's lived in the city for 10 years with no car. She travels quite a bit for work, and her present plans are to occupy the basement as her unit with the plan that if she ends up with a partner and with a family, and she expects at some point she'll be able to move upstairs in the building, take over one of the larger units herself, that is her long-term plan within the reconfigured building. Next slide, please. This is another view of the basement unit, which will be the owner's unit. Next slide. That concludes our presentation. We have a couple of slides that we don't need to get to unless questions come up, so we can, we can pause on the last slide. Thank you very much.
Questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Madam Chair and Board Members, Siggy Johnson with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This petitioner completed the ONS community process. Our office hosted an abudders meeting on April 23rd of this year, at which multiple abudders were opposed due to an increase in unit count, density, and concerns about lack of parking. The Brighton Alston Improvement Association is an active civic group in this area. The proposal is presented to them, and they voted to oppose due to concerns about egress and lateral parking. Our office has received five letters of opposition that have been forwarded to the board. With that background, we defer to the board for their judgment. Thank you.
Siggy, can you comment about the 50 or 60 support letters that the applicant referenced? Because we don't have them.
Yes, Madam Chair, when I heard that, I just did a recheck through everything that I have. I have no record of those letters. The letters that our office has have all been forwarded to the board.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I-
Let's go through public testimony. Mr. Reese will circle back to you.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, I see a lot of raised hands. Who's ambassador?
Annabelle, you're next, Annabelle Gomez?
Yep, Madam Chair, members of the board, Annabelle Gomez from the Brighton Alston Improvement Association. Though we feel for the petitioner and would like her to rebuild the property, we do think that the fourth unit in the basement is problematic. We don't support basement units, but this one has only one egress door, which is on the side of the building, not the front. It is a hill. We think it is problematic if it's a fire. The fireman won't know that there is a door and there's only one egress. So, we would like to support the project with only three units, not the basement unit. This property doesn't have any parking either, which was a lot of concerns from the neighbor as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Marcy Lanin?
Yes, my name is Marcy Lanin, I live, I'm the director of abutter at 11 Tip Top Street, and I'd like to just say a couple of things. I have put this all in a letter to the, to the zoning board. I think that we all appreciate that it was a hardship that there was a fire at the site, but I think that the biggest concern is the increase from two units to, to four units, and it's not just four units, it's from two two-bedroom units to three, three bedrooms plus office and a two-bedroom unit in the basement. So, technically, and this is the, the nature of this neighborhood, as much as one would hope and appreciate that something could be targeted towards family. I also have a three-bedroom unit that I rent in my owner-occupied space, and we do not choose or discriminate against the people who apply for our housing. And so, technically, if you look at the three-bedroom units plus their offices, the use could go up to 21 people living in this building. And then, it is very out of character with the street, which has all single and two-family homes. Parking is a significant issue. I know there's no solution to that, but it just, there is, there's no homes on the street where the tenants have no cars. They are all at least one, two, or three cars per unit. I also just want to take a couple of point, just a few points about the planning department's letter of support for this project. There were significant, I think, errors in that. One was that they said that it was, they, it met the goal of infill property. This is not an infill property, it's an existing building that is just being rehabbed. They claim that it is a transitional from the commercial core to the low-density residential area. This is in the low residential area. It is a two-family, one-family. I think the neighbors do not have any concerns about the design necessarily. It's the, the, it's the magnified increase in use of the property by the number of tenants. The area, if there's three bedrooms and an office, it can very well be rented to three, to four people.
Thank you, you can please wrap up.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, the other thing is about the proponents' suggestion that there were two community meetings and nobody came to oppose. I would say nobody in the neighborhood knew about it at all. In the last couple of days, when we got the zoning hearing, noticed it was a surprise to everyone that there were even these community meetings held. So, I feel like that is, that's sort of misinformation that's being put out there. So, I, I would strongly recommend not approving this at this point, deferring until there's more discussion, but the change from two to four-family, it's a bar two district and-
Thank you. Please add new information to following speakers.
Okay, Lady Lowe?
My name's Claire Lowe. I live at 27 Tip Top Street, so on the same side of the street as Priyat Phasann. I did receive notices. Every time there's a meeting, we get notices in our mailboxes, and because we're two condos in the same building, we got two notices, one in each mailbox. I understand that it is a basement unit, that's the controversial one, but it is on a hill, which makes it different from a basement unit in a building that's not on a hill, because there is a walkout area, it's quite open in that area. I think the building itself is beautiful, and I would like to support someone, owner occupying in this unit and making plans that they will stay there for a long time. I think that's something we need in the neighborhood. There's so many huge buildings going up that are super, super fancy and really out of reach. And to be able to afford to live in this neighborhood and to own something, you do kind of have to have an income from it, you know, otherwise, how can you afford to live in this area? So, I would support the project, because I think that she's been very careful in the design. She's been really careful with thinking about things and the way it's done. I wouldn't worry that much about, what, she said 20-something people in there?
Okay.
I know a lot of people in the area, they just don't bother having cars, because there's so much public transportation around here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Charles is next?
Hello, my name is Charles Woodruff. My li-
I live down the street on Parsons Street. I'd like to speak in support of this motion. I myself moved from out of the state to this area. I spent a lot of time in the Oak Square area. My running club meets there. I jogged through it all the time. I park nearby. I go to things that are nearby. I'd like to say that the proposed designs fit really well with the character of the neighborhood. I do myself have a car and I'm a young professional. And this is exactly the kind of place that I would stay in, one of the floors by myself. I think that though theoretically you could fit 21 people in there, I don't think, I just, it seems, strikes me as fairly unlikely. So yeah, I'd just like to say that I really support the motion. Thank you.
All right, Casique, please. Can you-
Hello. Yes, hi guys, I'm Elia. I'm from the neighborhood as well, off by Tremont Street. So Prisana came up to me yesterday, my fiancee presenting us with her plans for the project. And I thought it was very nice ideas. She did answer my questions as well. Regarding the meetings as well, not too sure about that. There was a lot of postings, especially in my unit, on the very first door. So I did see that. I think the project is really good for the neighborhood, as mentioned before. And I do feel sorry for the fire that did happen as well. There's a lot of young professionals, me coming from out of state, I come from Texas. So I think this would be like the unit I would personally want to be living in. I, as well as Charles had mentioned, I am always in Oak Square. I walk everywhere. I don't have my own car. Coming from Texas, where there's a bunch of vehicles, this area is very nice for transportation-wise. So I really do support this idea for Prisana. And there's a bunch of restaurants, as mentioned before, a bunch of buses. And I really hope that this project will go and be approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, okay. Megan, please. Megan?
Can you go tomorrow? Hi, yes, thank you. I live on Tip Top. I own the bungalow at number 19. So I'm three doors down from Prisana. And as I told her, her plans are very nice, but it's just too much. I depend on my car to get to and from work. And I have no driveway. And the influx of cars would make that unmanageable. And I understand that her plans are great, but you know, these other people speaking don't live on this street. It's just, it would be a real hardship. And again, Prisana's plans are beautiful. But another thing, I mean, in terms of spaciousness of the units, I mean, I have a 3,200 square foot lot. So I'm just wondering how, and my house is a two-bedroom. And I'm wondering how you can fit three and a four and a massive kitchen and a living space and all that. Anyway, but anyway, my problem is the density. And it should stay, if we could just have it deferred to have more community engagement because the meetings that Marcy was referring to are the BIA meetings, which do not have, apparently, if you're not on their Facebook page, you don't know about them. Those are the meetings that I attended and Marcy attended the butters meeting. And I guess that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moira?
Yeah, I can read this form of favor. City Council is bringing it's office. The council would like to request approval for this project. We've received concerns around the community members, just about the community process for this project. And we just have, the council has some more questions about it. So we'd just like some additional time for this office.
Thank you. One more?
Thank you. Mauro, you're next.
Yes, thank you for listening to me. I live next to the project. I'm opposed to it. And I will fight this project. And it's a four-family building in a two-family neighborhood, two and one-family. There's no reason, I don't know, I'm not convinced why it needs to be done here. There's no, there's no good reason as been presented. That's all I have to say. I will fight this project.
Thank you.
Thank you. There is one more person. Molly, is she on the floor?
Last one, last one.
Yeah, okay.
Please speak, please.
Hi, I've been waiting to speak as well. Lauren, waiting to speak.
Hi.
Whoever's gonna speak, please speak.
I am four. I am four. I think it's a lovely project. It's a beautiful-
And where do you live?
I live on, at the bottom of Tip Top on Tremont Street, 61. I'm a commuter. I honestly, the only thing, I'm agreeing with all the other people who say they approve. In addition to that, I just think families moving to Boston aren't coming here for the parking. They're coming here to have convenience to the city, so, which Oak Square provides.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Was there a final speaker?
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much. So I'm in support of this project. I've lived in Brighton for 15 years without a car. And I think to make an assumption that there has to be parking a part of this is just not really realistic for the needs of this community. We need more housing. We have to adapt to that housing. This is a beautiful facility that's really been tailored to the local environment in terms of the sort of external and internal decoration and design. As a professional who also moved my mother up here, this is the type of unit that I would have both for myself as well as for my mother potentially. So I think there can't be any assumptions that someone would be coming up with a car and that there has to be parking in this unit for the car. That's why people buy off-street parking and they don't get cars. So that's not a matter of this specific building. And you wouldn't have to fill these individual units with multiple people because there's multiple professionals right now moving to this city and moving around that needed places to live. So I'm in full support of this project. Thank you.
Other questions from the board? Hello? Hello? The applicant like a chance to respond briefly?
Sure, thank you, Ms. Chair. Just two quick points. One is, we think that the plans speaks for themselves. These are really lovely units that are designed to appeal to a very desirable type of tenant. As Siggy's board has mentioned, those folks are looking for units like this. This will be an unoccupied building and Prisana wants great, long-term tenants to love it and stay there. Secondly, we sent in our support letters to ZBAA. I have just forwarded all 60. We had an initial batch of 49, a second batch of 11 to Siggy Johnson. I don't know if he's been able to check his email. But we did get 60 support letters. They're all in the median area. We have several from Tip Top Street as well. And that's just because Prisana has been out for a couple of months, meeting what neighbors talk with people want.
Thank you. Are there other questions from the board? I see planning. Are you weighing in on this?
Yes.
Before that, Madam Chair, yes. The issue I have is with one egress, according to egress. I don't know if you can address that now or, but that would be my issue.
And we're not taking any other, I see raised hands. We've already heard from any people, planning?
Right.
I just wanted to say that we stand behind our recommendation for approval for this project. We believe that, given the findings of Alston Brighton Needs Assessment, more housing options is a top priority for this neighborhood. And any potential impacts of higher density can be mediated through appropriate massing, which is, which we believe the society is doing. And in terms of parking, the proposed project is consistent with BTD's parking guidelines. And the need to demolish some of the existing structures to provide off-street parking wouldn't be recommended. Therefore, we think so, and we believe that this case is appropriate.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I do have a question. I think to the proponent, I understand it was a two-family, had a fire. I think what I'm not understanding is how you ended up as a four-family as a result of that and how that fits within the zoning code here. I'm aware of, you know, the case, the case for and against this that we've heard from folks. And a lot of it has to do with other ancillary things such as parking, even from households that are just afraid of losing their parking to other households. But I'm not following the thread of how you've ended up at a four, at a four-unit building here as the most, as the least feasible that you need to move this forward.
Sure, if I may, Mr. Eakin, thanks for your question. And I'll just briefly before addressing that and I'll touch on the last question about egresses. Because this building's being rebuilt, it's meeting all modern codes, it's fully sprinklered. The fire department will ensure fire safety in this building. If our department asks for a second egress, of course, we'll add one. But it meets all codes. It's absolutely fire-safe. It will be fire-stocked, fire-blocked, and completely rebuilt. But again, the fire department and judges otherwise will of course comply. As to the unit count, this is a two-family district. On the area end, the zoning is approximately 35 years old. Alston Brighton was rezoned when this was a shrinking vicinity. We're a growing city today. And we do need to add targeted housing where we can. Within one block, going either way in Tip Top Street, there were four, six families. So there is actually, the existing conditions are different than the zoning count. There is quite an exit destiny here. And I guess the final question is, Prisana was perfectly happy to keep this as a two-family. And she finished renovating it. As such, she is making such significant structural alterations to the building that the cost of that has driven her towards increasing the occupancy to help cover all the additional expenses that she now has.
Thank you.
And a lovely answer.
Thank you. Did that address your questions, Mr. Eakin?
Yes, it did. Yeah, and I wasn't concerned about other building code-related things. There's no building code relief in front of us. So yes, that part answered. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I can put forward a motion for my colleagues to consider. I want to put forward a motion of approval. I think the additional two units allows for an incremental increase in density while sort of maintaining the residential character of the street. I think the planning department made a good point about this project being consistent with the Alston Brighton Needs Plan and which calls for greater housing options. I also think the topography of the site is pretty challenging and is consistent with that side of the street and kind of lends itself to the dimensional variances requested due to the grading.
Is there a second?
Yes, I'll second that motion.
Mr. Stunbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
No.
Ms. Turner?
No.
Mr. Eakin?
Yes, I think that there is enough unique characteristics of this particular parcel that this four-unit works there and is consistent with other planning activities in the area.
The chair votes no, the motion does not carry. Is there another motion? I'm out, I'd forward a motion to follow and then more community engagement. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stunbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Eakin?
Reluctant, yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. How can we, Eakin?
And in terms of dates?
Okay.
We could do August 26th, September 9th, September 23rd, or October?
I would look at the applicant as far as the additional time for community engagement. Any of those dates make sense to you?
Madam Chair, I think August 26th would give us over a month and a half of engagement. We've done quite a bit to date. That should be sufficient.
Okay, with that, we'll just give them.
Thank you.
Now move on to the hearing schedule for 11:30 a.m. We will ask again if there are any requests for withdrawals or deferrals from this time frame. Here will be none, we'll move on to two companion cases. First being case BOA 1704660 with the address of 75 Marcela Street. Along with that, we have case BOA 1704664 with the address of 86 Marcela Street. These are both mayor's office, mayor's office of housing projects, back projects. The applicant and their representative are present. Would they please explain the case to the board, cases to the board?
Thank you very much, Mr. Secretary and members of the board. I wish I could send lunch over there for you. You've had a long, long period of time today. But nonetheless, Joseph Feaster from the law firm of Dane, 125 State Street, Suite 1500 in Boston. I also have, and I believe they both have been uploaded to being panelists, Cameron Zahidi, as well as Stephen Chang, who will speak to the project. But let me just give some preliminaries before I ask Mr. Zahidi to speak. As you mentioned, Mr. Secretary, as the information before the board for the variance is sought, this is a project that's in Roxbury. And this is a project where, which is part of the Mayor's Office of Housing Welcome Home Initiative. This is a project which is trying to address the mayor's initiative of affordable housing. And in this project, there are, there are going to be 20 affordable housing units, one at eight affordable housing units at 75 and 12 at 86 Marcela Street. This project has received, has gone through an extensive community process, which I'm sure will be noted by the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, and has the support of Council President Ruthie Luzien, the Highland Park Neighborhood Association, Page Academy, Unitarian University of this Urban Ministry, and Deborah Nam Crane. With that, I would ask Mr. Zahidi to be allowed to speak. He is the principal of Urban Inc., which, Urbannica Inc., excuse me, which has done a number of affordable housing projects in the city of Boston. And he wants to speak to with regards to what he has done regarding this project here. So Mr. Zahidi?
Could you put it at the break, be in the presentation? Thank you.
Thank you. This is Cameron Zahidi, principal of the Urbannica. Urbannica is a vertically integrated company, a small company in Roxbury. We are design development and for past probably five, six years, we've been involved in creating affordable homeownership. This kind of concept that it goes, you know, with our mission. And we've been very excited, you know, been, you know, keep, you know, doing more of this affordable homeownership in these different communities. You know, currently, we are finishing two projects, one at 120 Hancock in Dorchester and one at 405 Washington Street, also in Dorchester. Here, we're asked by our partner Highland Park Community Land Trust. Next, please. Which they created this land trust around seven years ago and they have over 100 members. And their concern is more preserve Highland Park historic, cultural, ethnic, and social-economic diversity through affordable housing and open spaces. And the concept of this project was basically Highland Park Community Land Trust will keep the ownership and Urbannica will lease the land for 99 years in order to create this affordable homeownership. And this can keep affordability and durability, which I think is a, you know, great concept since most of these neighborhoods getting very, you know, different, you know, and, you know, we lose people that they used to live there and become very gentrified. We responded to- We responded to the RFP back in two thousand twenty-two. It took two years that we got it, you know, designation from MOH, and then, you know, we filed for the funding and we received the approval of the funding, which was a great outcome in September two thousand twenty-four for basically the gap that we have in creating this affordable housing. And today, we are in front of you at the ZBA hearing. Next, please. As there are twenty, you know, homeownership units, twelve at eighty-six and eight at seventy-five, and they're all mixed between one bedroom, two bedroom, and three bedroom, most of them are family-sized units. And we have, you know, limited, you know, parking spaces. However, since this project is hundred percent affordable housing, and we, has kind of a waiver on, you know, creating parking, however, these buildings are very close to public transportation, probably five minutes walk, and we have a bike room in both buildings, and also there is ample of residence parking on the streets, you know. As I said, you know, the buildings are, ten of them is going to be up to eighty percent AMI, and ten of them is going to be up to hundred percent AMI, and also ten percent of the unit is going to be accessible unit for fully handicapped units. Next, please. I'll here leave it to Stephen Chung, our architect, to speak about the project. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Again, as Cameron mentioned, my name is Stephen Chung, architect for Urbana Design. The proposal is actually two buildings on sites that are kind of across the street from one another. You can sort of see there, eighty-sixth Marcella Street has two franchises on Marcella and Highland, and then to the right, seventy-five, which is on Marcella. Those are two sites. It's again, one development, but two sites, twenty units across the two. Next. Aerial view just shows the kind of proposal, eighty-six to the left, seventy-five to the right, just so you get a sense of the context. This is the existing condition, sorry, go ahead. Yeah, existing condition, seventy-five Marcella Street. It is hilly, there's ledge, there's a lot of trees there. We are proposing to remove some trees to create our development. I think that there are eleven trees in total on seventy-five, which we'll remove and replace. And then eighty-six, there's four trees we'll replace as well. So, but anyway, that's the existing site. We did explore parking, but with the ledge, and then the need to create more curb cuts. I just think that we all agree that that was not desirable. Next. And just very quickly, just so you understand the concept, because I, this is an MOH thing now, and really try to, you know, explain the design concept, the design thinking, really for seventy-four Marcella Street, really looking at the existing context, the current housing stock, many triple deckers in this location, especially on this side of the street, and really kind of looked at triple decker technology to, as the basis for our design. And in this case, we really looked at it as if there are two triple deckers with an adjoining glass piece, which is really our lobby and common areas in between, but really the proportion of the, the two wings, let's call it, are very much in keeping with what's there. So that's, that's triple, that's triple deckers with a rusticated base, three stories above, often bays, vertically oriented windows, flabbergasted, and then there's variations off of that, whether it's color or, or different details, but really at the core, it's really that three-story rusticated base, bays, and a certain material palette. Next. And so aerial view, which really shows the two flanking, let's say, triple decker inspired our design proposal, and then that middle piece, which is really meant to be glass and, and in concept, a kind of void. Next. And that's a civil plan. We can go one more. So really, again, because of the site, we really, we needed a little bit of a basement for some mechanical spaces, so really carving as minimal as needed for some of storage and, and mechanical spaces. Next. This is the ground floor, and again, unlike the triple deckers that are there, I mean, really, because this is new housing, it needs to be accessible at grades, so we really are entering at that rusticated base. There are two one bedrooms on either side, both accessible units. Next. And then we begin to go up with three bedrooms to the left, two bedrooms to the right, and that sort of repeats as we go up all the way through the building. Next. Yeah, keep going. You guys can look at this and later in more detail if you like, but really just, just want to try to make sure and move along for you. Okay, sorry, sorry. Go back, go back one. Okay, there you go. So this is right coming up Highland Street to Marcella. You can see the ground floor entrance where that guy there is sort of going in, and then that glass common area in between, and then the two flanking triple decker typologies. Next. And then view on the street from the Marcella playground, kind of looking at the building. You can get a sense of the bays and the vertically oriented windows. Next. Okay, and then across the street, Marcella Street, it's a very, it's, it's complicated in the sense that the geometry is very difficult, and there's a level change from Marcella to Highland, which is one level below, and it's blocked by those trees. And those are the four trees that I explained before, which obviously they're mature trees and we'll replace them with a coherent landscape plan after construction is completed, hopefully as, if we're approved and going forward. Next. And in this case, and that's a mistake, the triple decker is wrong, that's, should say rowhouse typology. On this side of the street, and then going further down Marcella, there are many brick buildings, and there were more in, in the past that were either demolished under fire and so forth and so on, and to the bottom right is one-eighteen Marcella Street. That's a building that we created and finished last year. We really looked at this rowhouse typology as, as, for inspiration for this, this side of eighty-sixth Marcella Street, and in this case, it's really rusticated base, a kind of field of looking like brick, it's not brick, but looking like brick with mansard roof, a little bit different kind of expression than the triple decker, but, but there are enough on this side of the street that we really feel like this is a, a good typology to, to refer to for our design. Next. And so you see our, this is the aerial, our proposal from the top, and then to the right, you can see that little, sort of two rowhouses put together with the entrance to the middle. It's very much like what we're proposing. The idea that we have sort of two buildings with a central kind of connector piece, which is the entry. And again, on the building to the right, those stairs and so forth and so on, and of course, with accessibility requirements, we really can't do that, but really the idea is we do have this sort of ground floor rusticated base, that field that looks like brick or feels like brick, that reddish material, and then the mansard on the top. Next. And then this is, this is kind of interesting, because to the, to the top, you see the red, that's the same building as, as you see to the, I wish I could point, but as we're facing Highland Street, it's like the typology switches again, and so we decided to make this kind of a hybrid, where we said that the building on Highland would be, again, more like that triple decker typology. So it's a hybrid, it's kind of unique for us, but I think it's the right response, and I think that going through all the different designer review, review boards, I think that this is the right approach, at least that we think that, we feel good about this approach. Next. And that just shows the parking, the six parking spaces, how we're kind of addressing it on, and they're all on this side, there's six total, there, it requires some tandem to make this work. Next. And this is the, you know, there's not a lot of open space after we're finished with our building and, and the, and the parking, but really the green areas are reflecting kind of how we, we think we can really plant some trees and, and really kind of make it a, you know, a nice streetscape. Next. And you can sort of see three units per floor, is really the concept, there's one, two, and a three, oh, sorry, yeah, one, two, and a three per floor. Next. And this happens for four floors, so there's twelve units overall. You can keep going. Yeah, keep going. And then now we're looking at eighty-sixth Marcella Street on the ground floor, looking towards the building. Next. And this is going sort of the other direction, looking back towards the building, that rowhouse typology I had mentioned to you, and that's, I think that's all. So happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board?
Yeah, I have a small question. I'd just like to know, what would the percentage of the home ownerships then?
They're all ownership.
Hundred percent?
Yes.
Yeah, hundred percent affordable homeownership.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions from the board? Hearing none, may we have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office defer, uh, excuse me, let your record in support of this proposal. Thank you. Originally, bids were put out for this project through the MOH process back in two thousand twenty-two, since identifying the project and what would be going in this location. We had a couple of meetings with residents. They met with, the applicant met with the Highland Park Neighborhood Association, which was supportive of the project. They did have some reservations over the applicant that was selected, but as I said before, they were supportive of this proposal. With that, I'll turn it back to the board, but we are in support. Thank you.
All right. We have some comments from the public. Antonio?
Yes, good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Antonio Lash. I am a senior housing development officer with the Mayor's Office of Housing. This project involves developing affordable homeownership opportunities in the Highland Park Neighborhood Roxbury in the city of Boston. MOH has been working with Urbana Inc. on this project since the Public Facilities Commission tentative delivellar designation in the spring of two thousand twenty-four, and awards of funds in the fall of two thousand twenty-four going into two thousand twenty-five for these sites. The projects have gone through an extensive community process in partnership with the Highland Park Project Review Committee, and has the support of the Mayor's Office of Housing. Thank you.
Okay, next, we have a NAS RCC.
Thank you, Jesus. Madam Chair, members of the board, this is Mina Perez representing the Carpenters Union. Mr. Zahidi has time and time again shown that he's a responsible developer, and that's why the Carpenters Union is in full support of his project. Thank you.
Next, Joshua.
I am Neil LaRanche, the owner at two-five-three Highland Street in Roxbury, and I oppose this project because the city failed to abide by the agreement they had negotiated with me as an abbot on February two, two thousand twenty-two. I have been taking care of the parking lot that abuts my property at two-fifty-three Highland Street for over three decades, which I originally thought was part of my house since I purchased my property in nineteen eighty-nine. The parking lot contains two small parcels, include two-fifty-five and two-fifty-seven Highland Street, total length one thousand six hundred thirteen square feet. Next, to the parking lot is another small parcel called two-fifty-nine Highland Street, and all these parcels were part of IFP Package Five originally when the city published IFP Package Five. It was supposed to be two-fifty-five to two-fifty-nine Highland Street and eighty-four, eighty-six, eighty-eight Marcella Street. The city removed parcel two-fifty-nine Highland Street, which contained nine hundred and seventy square feet, and gave it to the abbot next to my property, but I was denied such favoritism despite honoring my property much longer.
So can you... Please wrap up. ...as on hers. Please wrap up.
Yes. My new lawyer is currently working on presenting my case to the court to seek judgment on the basis that I have maintained the parking lot over thirty years, and my rights deserve to be protected.
Thank you.
And this is going to be going on.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other ways to ask?
Uh...
Any other ques...
No.
Questions from the board?
One, one more person please.
Person already spoke? Okay, any other questions from the board? Hearing none, is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stunbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Wuwo?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Ekin?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. And I'm going to remind the last presenters, you're both Article Eightys, so please be pithy.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board. Have a great afternoon.
You're welcome.
Next, we have case BOA one-six-nine-eight-one-eight-four with the address of one Waverly Street. This is, as Madam Chair mentioned, another Article Eighty and Mayor, Mayor's Office of Housing. If the applicant and or their representative or president, please, please explain.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. Timothy Fraser from the law firm of Dane Torby, one-seventy-five Federal Street in Boston. Along with me, I believe, is Mr. Edgar Carrere from Crews Development Corporation, I don't see them exactly in the Zoom room, as well as Mr. Benjamin Lee from Michael Washington Architects. So Madam, or Sir Ambassador, if you see those folks in the waiting room, if you could allow those two to come in, Mr. Carrere and Mr. Lee. I'll continue along. This project is located at one Waverly Street, which is really the corner of Waverly and Warren Street in the Roxbury neighborhood, close to Dudley Square, and it proposes the demolition of an existing structure, as well as construction of a five-story building with fifty-two affordable residential apartments on floors two through five, and then a retail component on the ground floor. We're proposing a coffee shop or some other community retail-style commercial space. And then there will also be eighteen parking spaces on the ground level. The unit mix of those fifty-two residential apartments will be twenty-four one bedrooms, twenty-four two bedrooms, and four three-bedroom units, and this is a one-hundred percent affordable project ranging from zero to sixty percent AMI. There's also a community room for the residents, along with an enclosed courtyard and benches for seating in the rear. So, so just some history, Madam Chair and Board. We were before the board a few years ago on this project, and we were granted variances for this phase, this is phase two of a two-phase project. Phase one has already been built. However, when, when comes time to build phase two, we underwent a design review with both the BPDA and the MOH, as well as an extensive community process with surrounding residents, and as part of that review, we essentially changed the, the project most significantly based on feedback. We had proposed forty-eight units of elderly housing. The community really wanted something more active, so that's how we ended up with fifty-two units of still affordable, but more family-style housing. You see the two and the three bedrooms as a result of that. So in combination with the passage of time, since the original variances were granted, and then the changes in the project is the reason why we're before the board again to, to obtain the variances under this MOH project. Those variances are purely dimensional, except for the conditional use for the proposed coffee shop, and as I stated, we underwent a extensive community process by the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, as well as the Mayor's Office of Housing, and the project as revisers received positive. So at this time, I hope I could turn it over to Mr. Benjamin Lee of Michael Washington Architects, who can present the architectural plans. Was Mr. Lee able to enter the room?
Okay, I, I, I will admit, Madam Chair, that I had an eye appointment this morning, and I have my pupils dilated, but I will give this a go.
No worries.
Keep scrolling through, I, I will tell you that what you have on the screen there. So, so right here is the view from, if you're standing on Warren Street, if you look towards the right, that you're seeing the, the completion of phase one. You have one Waverly, the one Waverly building right there in front of you with the blue awning is where we proposed the, the coffee shop. You want to keep scrolling again here, and so this, here's the rear, if you were standing on Waverly Street, this is the courtyard area that we had proposed we did with the benches and seating for residents. Want to continue on? When we continue to the next one, I believe this is the parking, it looks like the, the surface parking. As well as here, you see the coffee shops.
As well as here, you see the coffee shops to the left and the surface parking to the right. I can scroll down, I can trade the unit mix and how that lines up. It should be a slide. Okay, so here's the elevation right here along Warren Street. Do you want down? Let's see. Okay, Mr. Lee is actually here. So why don't I turn the floor over to the board for questions, if that's okay? And then Mr. Lee is here to respond to those specific architectural questions if needed.
Sounds good. Are there questions from the board? Hearing none. Can I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office would like to go on record in support of this proposal. This went through a Boston planning-led community process, an extensive one. The applicant also met with Path, which had a very positive conversation. Residents there were supportive of the housing that was being added, the affordable housing that was being added, especially the deep affordability that was being offered, as well as the commitment to building family-style units. There were some concerns expressed about the parking ratio. But with that information, we just wanna go on record in support of this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Rochelle?
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Rochelle, and I'm with Senator Liz Miranda's office. I know it's been a long morning now, evening, so I'm gonna shorten my remarks and submit the rest via, via email. So the senator would like to go on record as in strong support of the proposed development for 1 Waverly Street. This project is more than just a new building. It represents a deep and thoughtful investment in community-led development, affordable housing, and economic opportunity in one of the city's most historically underserved neighborhoods. The proposal includes 52 affordable housing units across four residential floors with a unit max of 24 one-bedrooms, 24 two-bedrooms, four three-bedrooms, all of which are 100% affordable, as well as a ground-level podium with retail space, either cafe, restaurant, something commercial, parking, and bringing life and commercial vitality to the Warren Street corridor. Senator Miranda is especially encouraged by the developers' responsiveness to community feedback. The original design proposed senior housing, but residents voiced a desire for more active, intergenerational, family-centered development. Crews listened and completely reworked the program to prioritize family units and create a more vibrant community asset. This development also represents a model for racial equity in housing and development. With Crews Development being a Black-owned Roxbury-based firm with over 75 years of service to the neighborhood, the company far exceeds the city's equity goals, regularly achieving over 70% utilization of M/WBE contractors and local workers, as well as their office being directly adjacent to the project, ensuring ongoing presence and accountability to the neighborhood. For these reasons, Senator Miranda respectfully urges the board to approve the variances and allow this transformative project to move forward. Thank you.
Yeah. Next, we have Stephen Donovan.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Stephen Donovan. I work for the city of Boston as a housing development officer with the Mayor's Office of Housing. The Mayor's Office of Housing is in support of this affordable housing development proposal. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, no more AA comments for this project. Thank you.
With that, may I have a motion? Make a motion to approve. May I have a second?
Done.
Mr. Stunbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yeah.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, members of the board.
And next, we have case BOA 171...
Oh, it's my favorite. Pithy, pithy.
Last but not least, sorry, Mr. Secretary.
Okay. Case BOA 1716753. The address of 142 to 146 St. Mary's Street, 15. Yes, this is our final Article 80 case of the day. The applicant and/or their representative or president, please explain to the board.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Secretary, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Joe Hanley, McDermott, Colty Miller, and Hanley, 28 State Street in Boston. As requested, I will be precise, terse, but also thorough. So I just would like to take you through the first few pages of this presentation, and then have our architect show you the context and the plans. If you can go back to the first page, Madam Ambassador, introduce you to our team. I am here representing Allen Associates, which is a local Boston and Brookline-based property management development firm. Doug Allen and Matt Allen are the two principals. They are with us today. Also with me is Ben Wan from Rhodey Architects, who will take you through the bulk of this presentation once I finish the intro and the zone. Next slide, Madam Chair, I mean, Madam Ambassador. Just to give you some context for the location, within a watch shed in the Audubon Circle neighborhood, you will see our project site as titled in yellow highlight. And then you will see the various routes to two rapid-rail public transit T-stations, being the St. Mary's Green Line, as well as the Fenway Green Line. What you'll notice is the St. Mary's Station is, is a little, little over 500 feet away. And while the, down at the bottom of the page, while the proximity to the train station at Fenway Station is right adjacent to us, the route is a little bit circuitous and requires accessibility to go up and over. Also, in the site, you will see to the far left is the existing building on 101 Mama Street, which was, which is a high-rise residential apartment building, also owned by Allen and Associates. It's about eight and a half stories tall. And the project site includes a 1950s parking garage that used to serve parking for 101 Mama Street to the left. And my client, Doug Allen, and his family also happen to live in that adjacent building. So this is very much a local developer with commitments in the neighborhood. Finally, I'll note to you that you see the train tracks immediately adjacent to our site. You can see how that makes it unique and also constrains it with respect to its existing conditions and its shape and topography, which goes down in grade from Park Drive to the site. Next slide, please. And I'm not going to go through all of this, but it is just intended to show you the amount of work, but more importantly, the dividend and the results of what was almost over two and a half years of extensive community outreach, about two years of that through the Article 80 Large Project Review process with the Boston Plane Department, 20-plus meetings, five meetings with the Audubon Circle Neighborhood Association. And I think more importantly, this was a project that received a scoping to make it truly a transit-oriented development. So it included extensive meetings and process with the MBTA and the BPD to create a new publicly accessible pathway and transit way to the Fenway Station, which we'll show you. Next slide, please. So just a brief overview, and you'll see this more in the details to follow. Project site's a little under 30,000 gross square feet. The proposed project is approximately 84,520 of new gross floor area in a six-story building. It has been shaped, reduced, and modified through that two-and-a-half-year process to address community input and planning. Now 85 units, was originally 90. And we also increased the open space by 25% by reducing the footprint of the new building to set off from a shared common passageway in some of our abutters on Medfield Street. So we have 100 total parking spaces. That's part of an agreement with the Town of Brookline. One of the things I should note is St. Mary's Street is a private way and the divider from the Town of Brookline to where we are, obviously, in the city of Boston. And so we have been working with them as part of reducing the parking, the old parking requirements for the old apartment building next to us. And so we have 75 spaces that will serve that. We have 15 spaces that are for neighborhood accommodation rental. We have two-vehicle car sharing, and these are all EV-installed and EV-ready for future installation. One of the things we'll also talk about, or you'll see for the project goals, was, you know, you hear the word "transit-oriented" to development quite a bit. This really fits that in the sense that through this process, we're able to create a pedestrian connection and passageway from the site, not just for our residents, which obviously will alleviate lessened reliance on vehicular ownership, but also for the neighborhood and the public as a whole. I showed you that earlier, aerial view, and the challenges for those who have the accessibility needs that have to go to that route that is not direct. And that will bring this into modern planning principles, but also mitigate parking associated with it. We are also looking at a design-forward architecture, introducing, taking a site that is now almost entirely impervious with a 1950s two-story parking garage, BP parking garage, and curing its environment with a highly sustainable urban multifamily development and pairing the transit-oriented aspects with affordability in the midst of a housing crisis. So next slide. Just to give you some background on the zoning, justification for the variances in the relief sought. Project abuts to a municipal boundary between Brookline and Boston, and that provides some justification, as well as the deeded private way, which we have shared with Medfield Street neighbors, which you will see on the upper side of the lung of the building, opposite of the tracks. That is being improved by this development with less of a footprint and less utilization, obviously reducing the amount of vehicles from what was 100, approximately 175-car parking garage to now less and for residents who have direct access to the MBTA. We're also obviously constrained by the MBTA tracks, and we're dedicating a portion of our land as part of that easement to create the new pedestrian passageway, and then working with a site that obviously is trapezoidal in shape, 147 feet wide at St. Mary's and only 63 feet at the east of the lot line. We also have one of the largest lots in the immediate area, and obviously, it's an existing non-conforming use and structure that is not readily adaptive for its allowed multifamily use, again, in the midst of a housing crisis. Next slide, final from me with respect to zoning. So we're in the multifamily residential sub-district. Multifamily use is allowed. A BP parking garage from the 1950s is not. So what we're trying to do is work within the fabric of the neighborhood and the context for a reasonable project of scale that will also contribute to the housing needs for both market rate and affordability and increase public access to transportation in consistent with modern planning principles. The ancillary parking use to accommodate neighbors rental in 101 Mama Street is a conditional use. And then we require only four variances, one for the minimum lot dimensions for its size, which obviously is constrained by its unique, unique shape and circumstances. And then the allowable FAR here is 2.0. What is being proposed is 2.85. And the allowable height is three stories and 45 feet, and what is being proposed is six stories and 69 feet, again, next to a high-rise apartment building that is far taller and with a modest and appropriate FAR considering the circumstances presented. Finally, usable open space. We are able to meet half of the requirement, which is 200 per unit. Right now, there is zero open space. We're doing that with approximately 8,500 square feet of new ground floor and terraced open space, publicly accessible, improved public realm, new street trees, and of course, this first of its kind in this neighborhood, pedestrian connection to the train station. The next slide just shows you how this all comes together in the zoning refusal letter, which I won't go through. And now I'll hand it off to Ben Wan to show you how this comes together in plan. Ben?
Thanks, Joe. Good afternoon, members of the board. My name is Ben Wan. I'm a principal with Rhodey Architects. Next slide, please. I'll start, Joe, with a good sort of overview from the aerial of what the existing conditions are. But it's because of the very varied conditions that our site, it's helpful to walk through it on a ground-floor plane. So at the top-left shows, you're standing in Brookline and looking towards Boston. And that's the intersection of Medfield Mama, and then to the right there, St. Mary's Street is entirely a private way as it goes towards the south, which is the D-line. And as you move to the next image there in the top center, that's the view of St. Mary's Street. So to the right is that existing building in Brookline that our client owns, eight half stories, 101 Mama Street. And then there in the distance on the left is the existing parking garage. In the bottom-left image, it shows that a little bit more closely. It has a two-level garage. So there are two garage doors that enter into the top floor, and then a single garage door that enters down into the basement level. And on the right side of that image in the bottom-left, you can see the D-line, MBTA tracks, which are property of us. The top-right image shows what is a shared vehicular alleyway to the right there. It drops about four feet from 101 Mama in the distance down towards where we're standing at in the image. And that's the eastern end of the site. If you look to the left side of that top-right image, you can see the Fenway Station of the D-line there, which we are actually flush with at grade. The bottom-right image just wants to show you're standing sort of near the Landmark Center across Park Drive, just to show that despite the site's proximity to residential within its immediate abutters, you actually have a great amount of exposure to the Riverway and the Greenway and along with centers beyond that. So we're talking about, we're designing the scale and the character of this building. Next slide, please. So the principles that we take to bring back what is a six-story building with one basement level, 85 units, how we stitch that into a site that has such varied abutment conditions. So the orange is our six-story volume, and we're taking care to make sure that the height of that stays below the existing conditions of the buildings that, that are tallest. So on the left side, you see 101 Mama Street. That's that long, orange rectangle. And then beyond, our residence is at 448 and 452 Park Drive. And we're careful to make sure that our six-story volume stays below that. So we're stitching our new development into the context. But most of the fabric of St. Mary's Street and Audubon Circle is actually lower in about three-story rowhouse brick-type quality. So the purple you're showing is stepping our building down so that we're transitioning from the taller heights down to something that's more of that rowhouse fabric. And the image on the right shows that we've taken care to introduce a little bit of familiar vernacular character. We're introducing bay articulation, masonry materials that start to create some connections between our development and the existing neighborhood. Next slide, please. That's site plan. So viewing the roof plan, start to show how that form fits in with those varied conditions. So the northern edge of our building has a more orthogonal geometry, and it has those bays that pop out. And those relate to what are the rear of units across that alleyway. Those are sort of decks, small courtyards, and it has the same kind of green fabric along that edge. And then along the Riverway side, the Emerald Necklace, which is down the page to our south. Here, we're creating this more sweeping gesture that's part of a larger oval room up the Landmark Center, former Simmons across the lane, about the sweeping curve of the Riverway. We're articulating that with this radius bend in the cornice line. And what's that allowed us to do is introduce these pockets of greenery at grade for increased landscaping, store motto management. And as Joe mentioned, there is this new pedestrian path, which we are threading. Next slide, please. That path is connecting the Fenway and MBTA D-line Station, which is the bottom right of the page. And we need to get safe passage for the public all the way up to the page's top-left, which is the intersection where St. Mary's gets back to Medfield Street. That's where we get from the private way back to the public way. In introducing that pedestrian path, sorry if you can read that slide, we've taken care to make sure that it's a completely safe pedestrian and bicycle environment along its entire length. So it's that landscape path along the southern edge. It's a new complete streets design along St. Mary's Street with package rooms, bike rooms, the residential lobby. It crosses to a new expanded lobby, excuse me, new expanded maiden island in the streets. And we have six new street treats along that edge. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. We have, as was shown in the previous slide, a mix of studios, one-in-one plus bedrooms and two bedrooms. We've increased from 13 to 15%, so 13 units IDP and taking care to locate some of those larger units on the corners of the building, which have the advantage of longer vistas towards the park, towards the greenway and towards some of the skyline beyond. Next slide, please. These site elevations take that mass and give a little bit of an indication of how that building is going to stitch itself into the neighborhood. So the top view, the eastern elevation shows the riverways on the left and then the Audubon Circle neighborhood is on the right. Seeing the way that six-story volume steps down to five, transition down towards the lower scale of the neighborhood. And then on the bottom edge, that west elevation shows kind of this lighter beige tone. This is this basement that is trying to stitch itself into the whitewashed brick and stucco that we find throughout the city, the Audubon Circle neighborhood, showing that this is more of a transition, which you're not building, than the fabric. Next slide shows the way that we're taking that six-story volume, as I mentioned, and keeping it below the highest heights of the Park Drive building and 101 Monmouth Street are directed abutters. The top image is the alleyway elevation. So that shows that bucked tone masonry with a metal panel articulation. And then the bottom image is facing the riverway. So something a little bit larger, a little bit more contemporary. It's a part of the urban skyline. We have a sweeping gesture that responds to the bend in the riverway. Next slide, please. So the lux series, let us move through a little more quickly, just renderings that put the building to life and put it in its context. This is the view of St. Mary's Street, the improved streetscape, expanded island, and there the lobby way entrance at the corner of the building, showing that intersection between the contemporary volume, which is facing the riverway, and then this masonry volume that has some shadow lines, articulations, banding courses that are meant to be drawing from the historic architecture of the neighborhood. The next slide steps a little bit farther back. You're farther up St. Mary's Street, closer to the beacon, and you're seeing the way that those masses transition from the lower scale to the taller scale, keeping all of our building heights below the height of 101 Monmouth Street. Next slide shows the alleyway condition. So this is where that vehicular access between building, the existing residences, which are on the right image, our building there in the center, that first level parking garage. And then on the right, we've been able to bring back some small pocket park type of landscaping with trees and low planting. This is also where our stormwater management will be handled and then the Fenway E-line Station there just beyond. The next slide takes you farther into the riverway. So here's that view from the landmark center, the intersection of Park Drive and the riverway, seeing that sort of bend in the cornice responding to the richness and the greenery of the park. And the next slide takes you back even farther to show how our building is sort of stitching itself while presenting a contemporary language, a part of the street, the city state, that is fitting within kind of the scale of the neighborhood. And then the next slide, which is my final rendering, talks about the way you're standing at the Park Drive over the past, the D-line is running the leaping. You can see those two languages, the more contextual masonry and then the contemporary form of this orange kind of copper toned metal panel intersecting, transitioning back to the neighborhood on your right and then the riverway underlines. Joe, I can pass it back to you.
Yeah, thank you, Ben. And Madam Chair, just in conclusion, I didn't mention, we're also in the groundwater conservation overlay district, which was cited on our refusal letter. The board should have copies of the no harm letter and they approve a letter for Boston Water and Sewer, and I see Mr. Simonelli on as well. Thank you. Hand it back to you, Madam Chair.
Any questions from the board? Mr. Simonelli?
Yes, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, members of the board. Christian Simonelli, Boston Roboter Trust, and we have both G card letters from the applicant.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office has to defer to the judgment of the board. As you heard, this went through an extensive Boston planning led community process involving multiple public meetings and IAG meeting. They've been working extensively also with the Audubon Circle, which they'll be able to speak more to. I see Dolores is on. We understand there were some concerns related to a butter regarding the private way and the potential impact on that private way. With that information, we'll defer to the board. Thank you.
Okay, now we have, I think it's Sam Courage.
Good afternoon, Chair, members of the board. This is Sam Courage on behalf of Councilor Sharon Durkin of District Eight. The council wants to make sure that her support for the proposal is on file. She wants to applaud the developer for multiple years of process and progress with local associations, with the BPDA and so forth. She thinks that this brings great housing to the neighborhood. She wants to also note details such as a pedestrian connection to Fenway, the MBTA stop, as well as the developer's work and commitment with ACNA on beautification efforts, as I'm sure the association will speak on. She believes that proponents have taken this process seriously and urges the board to support. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. All right, next, we have Greg. Mr. Key, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. Greg, Mr. Cowley, attorney from Alcock and Marcus, with business address of 10 Forbes Road, Suite 400W in Braintree. Here representing two abutting condominium associations located at 14 through 18 Medfield Street, 26 Medfield Street. In the interest of time, I will rely heavily on the written testimony that was submitted in preparation for this hearing and do my best to keep my oral testimony brief. Essentially, for purposes of the record, my clients are in opposition to the relief requested by the applicant. My clients believe that the applicant did not satisfy the legal standard for variance under Chapter 40A and that no circumstances do exist to warrant such relief, including any hardship arising from the condition of the property or unique soil or topographic features. Additionally and significantly, as mentioned, the two condo associations do share a reciprocal easement with the applicant on all abutters, on the entirety of the alleyway that runs adjacent between the parking garage and the location of condominiums. The parking garage that is currently located at the site holds approximately 190 parking spaces and has three entrances and exits, all of which are located on St. Mary's Street, none of which are located on the abutting alleyway. The alleyway is a narrow shared private way that has historically solely been used rightly for access to and from condominiums by residents and service providers. The new redevelopment of parking garage, it will house 180 spaces, I believe, and the redevelopment will have a sole entrance and exit that will be on that abutting alleyway. This change of vehicles will significantly burden the purpose and intent of the easement and will cause a steady, consistent, heavy flow of traffic that will disrupt the condominium association's user rights in the easement. Essentially, there will be a flow of approximately 180 vehicles coming through this alleyway to not create.
Sir, please wrap up. We have half a dozen more raised hands.
Yeah, in conclusion, my clients, they do strongly oppose the relief requested and the alternative, they would request interference to engage with the applicant to see if there could be some type of resolution. Thank you.
Okay, next, we have Unida Rosa.
Hello, my name is Ebony DeRosa and I'm a senior project manager in the Development Review Division of the Planning Department. The project before you was approved by the BPDA Board on February 13th, 2025. The project underwent an appropriate Article 80 review for its size and impact, which included extensive collaboration with the Planning Department and MBTA to create the new pedestrian pathway connection to the MBTA Fenway Green Line subway station, as well as an extensive couple of years of community outreach. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have Dolores.
Yes, hello and good afternoon, members of the board and Ambassador Don. My name is Dolores Bookdanyan. I live at 452 Park Drive and I'm a director abutter. I am speaking as an individual and as a member of the Board of the Audubon Circle Neighborhood Association, ACNA. This project is located in the Audubon Circle Zoning District, part of the greater Fenway neighborhood. ACNA submitted a letter to the board prior to the meeting, which I hope you may have had a chance to read. ACNA board members have had the opportunity to meet several times with the proponent and the project development team, and we very much appreciate the time and level of engagement they have shown to us, and we also appreciate the responsiveness to our concerns that we have raised regarding the project. Although the garage building is nothing to look at, it's been a quiet neighbor and has served as an amenity to many residents in the immediate area. So we can't help but have reservations about the short and long-term impacts of a much more intensive use. ACNA also understands the objections that have been outlined by Attorney Miskawi. Nevertheless, the proponent's commitment to work with ACNA in preparation of the construction management plan, as well as finalizing the design details of the building, along with a number of other key commitments, is a significant factor in ACNA's decision to support this project. The proponent's rental practices reduce the likelihood that college students will be their predominant tenant. The affordable units may actually be more affordable than what's on the market, and the proponent's family being themselves close neighbors bodes well for continuing and productive relationship moving forward. ACNA is uneasy about the fact that the height of the building is not fully compliant, and the light of the current trend in Boston just has to be thankful that the town of Brookline imposed a 69-foot height limit. We unequivocally support issuance of a conditional use permit for the ancillary parking needed on site. To conclude, we think that the project will on balance be a positive one, and to ensure this, we respectfully request a board proviso that the BPD project agreement with the proponent include the important commitments the proponent has made, a number of which are outlined in ACNA's July 7 letter to the board. We thank the board for its consideration and we thank the proponent for their continuing collaboration.
Thank you. Remind the remaining speakers to please debrief and add new information.
Okay, next, we have Anthony Gilardi.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Anthony Gilardi. I'm speaking on behalf of Councilor Erin Murphy. I'm the council who would like to go on record in support of this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, my, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Minor Perez, representing hundreds of union carpenters that live in Wall Street in Boston. I am as well representing dozens of contractors that build responsibly across the city of Boston, wearing strong support of this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Minor. We have Shirley Chan. Okay, next, we have.
Oh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I am a homeowner of 18 Metfield, also represented by Alec and Paul. So I want to echo the sentiment that they shared, but I also want to reinforce the fact that that shared driveway poses a huge issue for current occupants of 18 and 14 and 16 Metfield, because even now there's huge congestion, never mind in the winter when you have to deal with all the snow. That's a huge concern for residents in the area.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have Pam Berry.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Pam Beal. My address is 644 Beacon Street, and I am a member of the Impact Advisory Group for this project, and I am here to say that this was a thorough public process that addressed all issues raised. Accordingly, I would like to go on record in support of this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Last speaker.
Okay, Cassim.
Yes, hello everyone. I want to speak directly against this project, honestly. It's not.
By your, what's your address?
26 Metfield Street. I'm right about the proposed property right behind it. And honestly, it is not a small issue for us. It is a huge, huge mess that will last for years for someone my age or I speak for many of my neighbors. It is a big chunk of our life, but that is, that's not your problem, that's my problem. However, this project will really hurt or even destroy the quality of life for those of us who live in that, in that area. We are talking about our homes, our peace and quiet and our daily lives that will take a huge hit. Our bedrooms and our decks will be totally exposed to the, to the new bathroom windows and backroom windows and God knows what else. And that is a direct invasion of our personal space and our privacy. And let's not forget the traffic, as many of my colleagues here mentioned, the traffic and the walking, which would be a nightmare that this will cause. Our streets are already busy and adding this many new people and cars will, will make getting around the neighborhood incredibly hard and possibly dangerous for everyone, whether you're driving or just trying to walk in the back of.
Thank you. Thank you. Can the applicant address these concerns around the shared drive, the shared easement and sort of access, you know?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, so I want to thank the Medfield Street Neighbors Council and of course, the Audubon Circle Neighborhood Association, which we continue to work with and deeply appreciate. So just to give you some perspective, this is a shared alleyway, which is at the rear of the Medfield Street properties that runs sort of to the back of Park Drive and is bordered by St. Mary's Street. We, as a private way open to public travel, we own halfway to the center line, as do the Medfield Street neighbors in the back. Our proposal is very mindful of the current status back there and how we can improve upon it. So it'll actually lessen potential impacts. We are, by removing the parking garage, we're actually moving the footprint of the new building further away, which will then widen that, the width of that shared alleyway of which our vehicles would only be using our portion of. We also made changes to the location of the parking garage exit and how it works, Madam Chair. You'll see it, it's at the edge of that shared alleyway in St. Mary's Street. Inside the garage, there are, there's curving and concrete structure that directs you left, so you really physically cannot go right onto the shared alleyway, whereas that was not the case before, even with the entrance on St. Mary's, folks could come through there. And we have striping, signage and the like. Another thing I would add, we worked carefully for ride share, and I talked to you about this dead-end shared way of St. Mary's Street. That is where the address of the building, the principal lobby, and there's a port of share across the street at 101 Monmouth, again, owned in common by this developer. And that is where all receiving and Uber, Lyft and ride share will go as well, again, directing them out St. Mary's and away from the shared alleyway. So we do think that the facts and the project at the end of the day actually reduces that impact, and it's certainly within our rights. Not a zoning issue, as you know, but we will obviously continue to work with the community on that. The final thing I'd just say on reducing on the parking impacts, you know, we're taking a commercial fee-paid parking garage from the 1950s that accommodates almost up to 180 or so parking spaces, and we're reducing that significantly and mostly dedicated to a new development that is textbook transit oriented with this new huge investment in direct connectivity to two train stations now, as well as more modernizing the planning approach as part of that. And I'll just leave you with this. We, part of the scoping process, we did, you know, a pretty detailed trip generation. The trip generation is pretty modest, based on the data and the science here. It's about eight cars in and eight cars out during peak AM, PM, based on the data. And while that goes up across the board with respect to a week, it's certainly less than what 180-car parking garage could be. And the benefits we would suggest far outweigh the impacts that I think we've mitigated and continue to work proactively with the neighbors and the neighborhood group on.
Thank you.
I have a question. If I may, I'm sorry, the number, so this is 101 Rudi Architects. It's, the existing garage is almost 190 spaces, it's probably 190. The new garage proposes 82 spaces, so it's a significant reduction from the existing parking.
Yeah, and that's in our presentation.
Thank you. Other questions from the board?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Nichols from the IAG on two.
Yeah, there is one more person, Michael Nichols.
Hi there. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Michael Nichols. I'm a 15-year resident of the neighborhood at 120 Mountford Street, was also on the IAG for this project, here to offer my support. Was also on the IAG for this project, here to offer my support for the project. I was thrilled when an outdated parking garage was slated for better, better supporting, you know, obviously our city's extreme housing crunch with something that is, you know, thoughtful for the area, appropriately sized. I think many on the line know that at earlier times in this process, I called for it to be bigger. I do think the proponents have, have, have been quite open to feedback from the community. And I'd be thrilled if it was just the conversion of an outdated structure to something that offered 85 units of housing, both a market rate and affordable housing nature in the heart of our neighborhood. But the fact that it, that it restores and makes a clear pedestrian access from the neighborhood to the T, which has been on the wish list. I led the Audubon Circle Neighborhood Association for five years of the 15 I lived in the neighborhood as its president. And like, we've, we've forever wanted that kind of connection to, to more safely connect the residents of the neighborhood to the T. This achieves that, as the proponents noted. It's a terrific transit-oriented location for development. And, you know, there are a number of other environmental benefits of the project that have been detailed. But I do think it's a great project. I think they've been quite responsive to our community and I'm here to offer my support.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll put forward a motion to approve. I think this is an appropriate location for the 85 units of housing. It's near transit within a multifamily zoning sub-district surrounded by other multifamily residential uses. It's replacing an auto-centric use with residential uses. And its height at the six stories or more is appropriate. There are comparable heights or more nearby on Park Drive or directly across St. Mary's Street. So motion to approve.
Is there a second? Back in. Mr. Stunbridge?